It feels like we're talking to someone from Ohio. It's like it never came to us. We don't believe in this. It's just like, what? Maybe it's not okay.
I just, I feel the rain. Yeah. It's like, we should, we're not being, we need a couple of hours. I'm sorry. In order to, quite, yeah. So, I'm sort of, 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 All right, now that our distinguished Commissioner Colo is here.
Hi, everybody.
I'm going to call to order the May 13th, 2024 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Douglas, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Punctuation tells stories. Yesterday, we celebrated Mother's Day. That's M-O-T-H-E-R apostrophe S. We remembered mothers no longer with us and celebrated those who are. But when Julia Ward Howe established Mother's Day in 1870, it was spelled M-O-T-H-E-R-S apostrophe, plural. It was Howe's manifesto on behalf of the women who endured the horrors of the Civil War. They held their homes together during that terrible time, running the farm, rearing their children, working in industry, raising money for the war, nursing the wounded, burying the dead, only to find themselves re-marginalized afterwards. Witnessing the horror of the Civil War and the prospect of the Franco-Prussian War, Howe called for the Women's Peace Movement with a "festival which should be observed as Mother's Day", plural, "and which should be devoted to the advocacy of peace doctrines, to be held around the world on June 2nd." As the historian and journalist Heather Cox Richardson writes, "Mother's Day was not designed to encourage people to be nice to their mothers. It was part of women's effort to gain power to change society." So yes, be nice to your mother and be fierce for all mothers, for all women, for liberty, justice, and peace for all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to item four on tonight's agenda, which is approval of the agenda. Commissioner Colo?
We have approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Colo to approve the agenda. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion on the motion. All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. This brings us to our next agenda item tonight, which is the public comment section of tonight's meeting. Just a few guidelines before we begin. We have a full house here tonight, so some of you might have participated in public comment before, some of you may have not, so it's always a helpful reminder to let folks know how it works. So the City Commission values and relies upon the input of our fellow citizens to help us make decisions. Now is the time set aside to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, whether or not they're on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be a public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you are here to comment on public hearing regarding Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2024 Action Plan, you can wait until that item is opened up for public hearing and you can speak at that time. If you wish to speak tonight, either at public comment or regarding the public hearing, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium. For the record, you will state your name and address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wants to hear from anyone who wishes to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, not per topic. With the exception of the public hearing, which you can speak again if you spoke at public comment. And there is a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your allotted time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, please don't hesitate. Please send your emails. We did receive a number of emails from folks, which is really helpful ahead of our meeting. Please note that we typically don't respond directly to questions that are asked during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and when your topic is discussed, we will ask those questions on your behalf. If your questions aren't related to anything that's on the agenda, our interim city manager, among others, are taking notes, and we'll get back to you with the answers accordingly. And if you do have a question that's not on the agenda, I highly recommend you leave your contact information to Ms. Judy Davids, our community engagement specialist. She's really good. If you ask a question we don't know how to get back to, it's just a rhetorical question, but if you really want an answer, we can get you an answer, and Judy will help us facilitate that. I know some of the folks here are here to talk about the Rochester Development Proposal. I know things didn't go swimmingly well at public comment during the planning commission. I just want to remind everybody, we're all on the same team here. We want to hear from everybody. We want to listen to what everybody in the public has to say. And there will be opposing views on any topic that we are discussing or voting on as a city commission. So I highly, well, I don't highly recommend. This room, this chamber demands that we treat it as a courtroom and show it the respect it deserves. So I kindly ask that if somebody's making comments or whatever, don't interrupt them. Clapping and applauding, well, it may seem, you know, like a good thing to do to support someone that supports you. It may actually discourage others with opposing views. They might feel a little intimidated. They might not want to come up and speak. So regardless of where you are on any issue, we just ask that we come up, we do the public comment, we're listening, we're taking notes, we'll ask your questions. And I know we're a great community of civil people, and we'll have a good meeting tonight, good dialogue, and we'll hear a lot back from the neighbors. So with that, who's first tonight? We'll go right here, sir, in the blue shirt.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, if you hand it to the city clerk, she can pass it down this way. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Tim Norton. I live at 303 West Houstonian. I'm here on the sidewalk that they're proposing to put next to my house. Back in 2015, the block received an exemption because of the trees that are on our, both our mine and my next, or neighbor, a couple houses down. It says here that there is a 39-inch diameter tree that would need to be removed for the sidewalk. Actually, it's more like 60. It's about, it's older than the house, which the house is 100 years old. It's a healthy tree. It's adjacent to our house. Then they'd also put a sidewalk against the curb, is what I'm gathering here. We had a arborist come out and look at the tree. And the tree is mature sugar maple in very good health, which is rare in urban landscape. There are no large dead stems in the tree's crown. It does not appear to have any major self-girdling roots and is a low-risk tree for both the Nortons and the public exposed to it. One of the reasons this tree has matured gracefully is that there was no sidewalk beneath it. It is nearly pristine. Tree roots are severely damaged during sidewalks installation and repair. This is the leading cause of premature tree mortality and can often be overlooked despite its abundance. This is because there is a significant delay between the damage incurred and the symptoms of decline appears sometimes years later. Installing a new tree, new sidewalks next to the tree's trunk is likely to trigger a chain of events that will lead to the death or severe decline of the tree. Furthermore, the damage to the trunk and major roots close to the trunk affects tree stability to a meaningful and significant degree. Significant root damage dramatically increases the risk of the tree possesses to both the Nortons and the public because the roots are critical to stability. Measuring and monitoring the tree's stability is possible, but very expensive and technical, and is generally reserved for unavoidable scenarios. We're not dealing with an unavoidable scenario here. The other option to install a sidewalk would kill the tree to make space for it. Killing mature and low-risk tree for the sake of a sidewalk would reduce the quality of life for the residents who benefit from it, which is everybody in our neighborhood. A sidewalk exists at the opposite side of the street. The thinking it's just one tree is problematic. It is not just one tree. The Royal Oak mature trees are a major factor in why folks move to the community. Installing a sidewalk beneath this tree or killing it to do so does not align with the best tree care practice, modern ermit forestry practices, or modern public health practices. The benefit the public receives by trading a healthy, low-risk, mature tree for a small section of sidewalk is not self-evident. The city's mature tree populations are rare, and even rarer for cities that do their best, that do not do their best to care for the trees.
Thank you, sir.
And there's also, there's also pictures, which, on the second to last page, is the sidewalk that's across the street, so we don't need the sidewalk.
We have, yeah, thank you. We have a lot of folks here tonight. I don't want to be rutia, but understood.
No, I, I do, I just.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, can I ask that when someone's talking about sidewalk, if they could tell us the sidewalk number on the packet that helps us?
I got parcel number on the packet that I gave.
We have location numbers in the packet. If you happen to have those, it'd help us find it.
I think it's number one.
Okay. All right. We'll go in the back with the ball cap on. Next. Yes, sir.
I got some notes here. Turn my beer.
Yeah, if you, if you hand them to the city clerk, she'll pass them down to us.
Hello. My name is Chris Shellnut. I'm at 2806 Maplewood. I'm here about the sidewalk improvement. In particular, item location number 15 on Maplewood Avenue. Looks like they were wanting to, well, back up a minute. This area was exempt from sidewalk installation back in 2015. It's not clear what has changed in 2024, why it's still not exempt. Looks like they had evaluated the sidewalk going along the west side of Maplewood to connect up over on Glenwood and decided it really wasn't feasible. So instead, for safety reasons, it looks like they're going to try to do some crosswalks in two different locations near my property and near a neighbor's property. The first crosswalk is right next to my property at 28, or 2806 Maplewood. It's on the Glenwood ramp, is what I'll call it. And it would cut across the city property, across the street, onto the city property over on the other side of Glenwood. What's not noted in the report is that is on a curve. There's a steep curve, and it's actually in the picture that's shown in, for location 15. The curves around Maplewood goes into Glenwood. Where they're wanting to put that location of the crosswalk is 75 feet from that curve, which is a blind curve. Any typical vehicle coming 25 miles an hour on that curve is going to hit that area of that crosswalk in two seconds. Two seconds for a person with a large vehicle to react. That will be, it will also be an issue with weather conditions, and icy conditions here in winter in Michigan. We all know it's a problem. There's also no street lamp where they're proposing to put that crosswalk, so there's a safety concern there. So now you've got 75 feet around a blind curve in the dark, no street lamp. People are, will be at risk. There are two other areas that were in the report, 17D and 17E, which was on Vencetta, where they had elected not to recommend, mostly because those two areas where they were wanting to do it, to not provide access to nearby streets in the neighborhood. And if there were other places to cross a street, on Main Street, in a Marywood, and on, near Washington. This is the same situation. That crosswalk and the second crosswalk that they're proposing does not provide any additional access to the neighborhood, especially the one on Glenwood. It will be set 100, less than 120 feet to one that's at Glenwood and Glenview. That's not an adequate use of resources for city funds. The same thing with the one down. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go with the blue folder right here.
Hello. Carolyn Marks, North End Town. We've been busy since last we met. We have 300 signatures on petition opposing the project on 14 Mile, on Rochester Road at 14 Mile. I'll give them to the clerk at the end of my speech here. So, as I've talked about before, there has not been a traffic study. And I invite each and every one of you, and the petitioner included, to spend 10 or 15, five or 10 minutes in my driveway, look at the chaos, and see if it's wise to put another 60 to 80 cars in that, on that small intersection. And opening up, you know, punching a hole in the brick wall, that to open up the north-south alley is a danger. Today, I just happened to watch people. I know they wanted to make a left, but they weren't able to make a left because the traffic was too far backed up, so they made a right, which is going to cause the people in Genesee to have more traffic. If I can't get out of my driveway, because one thing I've been noticing lately is the cars heading west are beyond to the east of my driveway. So in the morning, when my husband goes to work, he's got to wait excessively. When I go to work, or in the evening, you know, we're going someplace, it's rush hour, the traffic stopped at the light at 14 in Rochester is east of my driveway. So again, I invite each and every one of you to spend five or 10 minutes in my driveway. I don't have to be with you. I'll put a chair out for you. But this is a very dangerous, dumping 60 to 80 cars is very dangerous without a traffic study. Let's see. So, and out of this, we have 90% of the businesses and homeowners which are within 100 feet, which I guess that would make the vote be a super majority vote versus just a majority vote. So I request that, and those are, I got those paper clipped off, because I'm nice. And then, again, I want to talk about seven lights surrounding that property. In the evening, it's going to create light pollution. You know, it's going to be a little like a casino, like I said at the commission meeting. You know, these are serious concerns. It's not just about the money, okay? It's not just about the money contributed to you, or that Mr. Cohen, or Krieger and Klatt, you know, their projects seem to just go through. These are serious concerns to the children that ride their bike, to the pedestrians that walk, and to the motorists on the road. It's a crazy intersection where driveways, and plus, there's two bus stops on each side of 14 Mile. So please, you have my email. I emailed you earlier. So get, contact me by email if you'd like to come and sit in my driveway and observe what I observe every day. Thank you.
All right, who's next? We'll go to this side of the room, gentleman in the black shirt right here on the end.
Hey there, my name is Anthony Pino. I'm at 1946 Vincetta and I'm number six, I believe, on the recommended sidewalks. The sidewalk would go along Houstonia Avenue and I have some concerns. I obviously don't want it, but there's a, a grade issue basically over eight feet. There's about a 42 inch drop. Also at the top, there's a power line of the hill. But most importantly, there's about an 80 to 90 year old oak tree. I've been blessed to have two really old oak trees in my yard and I've maintained them and I just have a very strong feeling that if you put in the sidewalk, it's going to damage it. I haven't had time to go to get an arborist, arbor, I can't even say the word, but to get the tree, the tree people out there to look at it. But, um, but I have had them out in the past to make sure that they're healthy and, and do some, um, life elongating things for it. So, um, just I can send in pictures. People are more prepared. This came to me probably about two weeks ago. The first one came through and it showed no changes. So, um, and then the recommended list came later, but, um, really don't want one, but I, there's a lot of people here, so I don't want to spend more than three minutes unless you guys have some questions.
Thank you, sir. Uh, sir in the red.
Good evening. My name is Rich Hetrick. I live at 1002 Genesee on five houses from this project that they're proposing. Couple of things first, in the planning commission, they promised that they would be doing a pork chop driveway so that westbound traffic on Genesee could not enter that parking structure. They had to come in off of Rochester. Their drawings, I don't remember what page it's on, only shows pork chop going out, but coming in, it's a wide open drive. So anybody east, anybody south coming to that property is going to cut through the neighborhoods and come in and go into that. Okay, number one. Number two, I'm not sure if the Royal Fire Department has done much looking at this project. They had a lot of modern amenities that they told us when we were in the planning commission. But I've noticed two that are missing that I would think were pretty modern. One is an inside staircase and two is an elevator. All right, now I, all of you have elder, that have elderly parents, you want your elderly parent in his bedroom on the fourth story to have a medical emergency EMS shows up, they go, and this could be in the middle of winter. They've got to go four, three stories up outside, snow, rain, wind, whatever, bikes chained to the railing, whatever's going on. They've got to go up, diagnose the patient. They, now they've got to transport. Now the EMS goes back down to get the gurney. They go back up with the gurney. They load the patient and then they go back down the gurney to put him in the ambulance. Hopefully he's alive by the time he gets Beaumont. Okay, this is ridiculous. This is modern times. How can you go without inside stairways and without elevators? There's been a lot of promises made, but those two things should not be eliminated and have outside staircases. It's no more than the New York City tenement. And the other thing that I was looking at is she mentioned the traffic study. I'd like to see a study on the electrical. You're putting 42 residences, 42 homes on an acre property and those homes are no gas. They're electric. Okay. I would like to see a DTE rep standing right here saying, we've done the study and your grid will handle that. And if, because I've been told it won't handle it and they're going to have to upgrade the substation. The upgrade of the substation is anywhere from $200,000 to $500,000 to upgrade that substation to service 42 homes. Who's paying for that? Are they paying for it as a cost of doing business? The city going to get dumped with the bill? Are we going to get dumped with the bill? I think somebody has to look at these problems before anybody can vote and just think of your mom or your dad up on that third floor with the paramedics running up and down with a gurney in the middle of winter and hope he's alive when he gets to Beaumont. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go with, I see right here in the middle, yes.
My name is Mike Bullcock, so the 2822 Maplewood Avenue. I am neighbors with Chris who spoke earlier. And there's just a couple of things I wanted to add to what he said. This photo you guys showing your proposal, it doesn't show that three feet to this side of it is a fire hydrant with fire hydrants we need access to. Not to mention, you guys said there's going to be one 16 inch tree and two 18 inch trees cut. And then on a different one, you said use feet, like a three foot tree would need to be cut and then two, two foot trees to keep the sidewalk going all the way around. I don't understand what the difference is between the two. I also was wondering how, who, I know you guys don't answer questions, but maybe I could send an email later, like who's responsible for it? I know you guys are going to, city is going to pay for it originally, but when it decays, who's responsible for it then? And then who's also responsible for maintaining it? Is that a burden that's put on us, the homeowners? Or is that a burden put on the city? And that's really all I had to say. I'll let other people talk about Rochester because they seem very fired up about that.
All right. Yes, sir, right here, yep.
I have some petitions here. Could I leave them with?
Yeah, if you want to leave them with the, with the city clerk. She can receive them.
Could, could I ask the people in the neighborhood that I'm representing?
Sir, you have to, sir, you have to address the city commission. Sir?
Thank you.
Sir, you have to, guys, this is a courtroom, remember? So you have to address the city commission. Those are in our bylaws and our rules.
I'm sorry.
And the reason why I have to be a stickler on them because there'll be one time that I don't enforce it with somebody and then they get on me. And so I understand what you're trying to do. I don't see any harm with it, but they put the rule cap on me, so that's what I have to do.
Obviously, I, I wanted to leave an impression that there are a lot of people involved in our issue and we're all of the same mind. My name is Dave Nelson. I live at 2619 Vincetta Boulevard. One of 14 properties that backs into West Webster between Marywood and the park commonly known as Bicycle Hill, the dead end. This is, the item I'm speaking to is item five on the 2024 sidewalk, new, new sidewalk program. This item was exempted in 2015. There's been no substantial changes to the neighborhood, why it should not continue to be exempted. And that, and that's why we're here. The, the two reasons we feel that way is because the city, the city's reason for putting a sidewalk on the south side of the street, that's the backside of our property, the south side of Webster. The reason the city gives is that the sidewalk will provide better pedestrian access to Marai Park, that's Bicycle Hill at the dead end. That is not the case. It will not provide better access because there is already currently and has been for years, a sidewalk on the north side of the street that goes directly into the park. And there's two fairly gentle steps off that sidewalk into a gently sloped gully in the, in the park. And that's pretty reasonable access. If this sidewalk were to be put in, on the south side of the street, the proposed sidewalk, it'd be against the curb and I've already heard some objections to that from other people. It'd be next to the curb. It would go down to the dead end, an end at an apron at the dead end. The apron has a guardrail around it to protect people from falling into the gully created by a feeder creek from Old Red Run. There is one gap in the, in the barrier and it's a foot deep. It's a big step and the slope is, is very difficult. It's dangerous. The immediate access, the access is already, that, that's my point I want to get across. The other thing is trees, going to lose a lot of trees if this happens.
Understand.
And other people are going to talk about that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. We'll go back here in the far back corner, yes.
My name is Bill Barnes. I live at 1504 North Connecticut Avenue across the street from the Lockman Park tennis courts. I would like to bring an issue to your attention, which has caused grief among our residents here in the Lockman Park neighborhood. It appears that the two tennis courts in the northwest corner of the park are to be demolished. Many other players and residents who have enjoyed this recreation center for over 30 years, their mere appearance next to the sidewalk and Bel Air Street have given residents, players and visitors a psychological boost when they pass by. Their high visibility instantly suggests a wholesome, active, healthy, happy community. Their placement, appearance and frequent use combined a manifestive vitality to the area. I have a solution which promises to make everyone happy. It's also economical. Rather than build one completely new court, which Royal Oak planner Joseph Murphy informs me is much more expensive than it used to cost formerly. Why not simply resurface the existing courts? With this small revision in the park plan, while the rest of the project remains the same, Lockman Park will be beautified, revised, useful and continue to project vitality to the observer. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. All right, we will go, yes, ma'am, on the end with the red folder? Yes. Yep. All right, take your time.
Okay. I'm Anne Steffi. I've lived at 1129 Ottawa for 45 years. We love our neighborhood. We love our trees. We love our space. We have great concerns about the project being proposed at Rochester and Genesee. But one of my big concerns is how decisions are made when we have development wanting to put high density projects into our neighborhoods. You all know about Clarence Thomas? You know, the Supreme Court Justice? Well, he's getting all kinds of things. He's getting RVs. He's getting fancy vacations. He's getting his mother's house paid for. I'm sure you guys aren't getting anything like that. But Clarence Thompson, you got to admit, this looks sleazy. It looks crooked. It looks corrupt. Royal Oak is a city of, I love Royal Oak. It's a city of integrity. So when we have situations where any of you up here take money from people who want to put developments in the neighborhood, why don't you recuse yourself from voting on those projects? That would give you quite a bit of integrity, honesty and transparency. In our folders, many of us here have these folders, we have pages and pages. Mike, Friends of Mike Fornier, you've got a lot of friends, Mike Fornier. Many of them have to do with Dennis Cowan here, who's asking for a lot of variances on this project. The neighborhood does not like this project for some of the reasons cited. And I would just say, please consider recusing yourself if you're getting money from any of these guys. Okay? That's it.
Okay, all right, who's next? We will go with this gentleman right here on the end. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Michael Rankin. I live at 2703 Vincetta. I'm here about the sidewalk, project number five. First of all, I want to thank the commission for the previous exemptions for this sidewalk. I think it's the right thing and I hope you'll see that again. I've lived in my house for over 30 years now. Most of my neighbors have been there for nearly 50 years. Most of us are senior citizens on fixed incomes. I'm the youngest of them. And this is also a unique neighborhood. The houses are built into hills with the garages on Vincetta. And then they go through to Webster on the back up a hill. So putting a sidewalk there is going to mean that senior citizens like my neighbors who are like 80 and 90 are going to have to take their snow blowers up the hill between the houses to clear those sidewalks in the winter time. Not only that, it's going to affect the tree canopy back there also. Webster dead ends there. It's a small park there. There's virtually no traffic there. And what foot traffic there is, is adequate to get into the park there on the north side of the street. This is a burden on homeowners financially also, like my personal cost would be $3,600 and I just retired last year. I believe that the, these reasons outweigh any benefit that the new sidewalk would have to the entire Royal Oak community. And I'm asking that you continue the exemption and please don't disturb my home and my neighborhood that I love just the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Tom? Oh, we have two Toms. Oh, sorry. I was pointing to the back. Tom Toddweiler. How about we'll do a Tom and a Tom? All right, all right, let me guess, Tom? All right, you can go first and then Tom, you can jump back after, sorry.
I don't know whether that's good or bad, but my name is Tom. But, uh, my name is Tom Harmon. I moved to Royal Oak in 1978. I lived at 323 West Webster. I purchased my current home at 914 Genesee Avenue in 1993. I respectfully request that the commission disapprove the proposed rezoning and site plan for 4707 Rochester Road. Let's review the proposed rezoning and structure in context. This is a 3.5 story, 42 unit apartment building on a 1.2 acre lot on the northeast corner of Rochester and Genesee. For comparison, there are currently 42 dwelling units on Genesee Avenue between Rochester Road and Vermont Avenue. And this includes eight existing single bedroom apartments on the southeast corner of Rochester and Genesee. So you see in one fell swoop, you're doubling the number of dwelling units with resulting increases in traffic and burdens on the existing infrastructure. I note that there have been at least three water main breaks on the north side of Genesee close to Rochester Road in the last 10 years. And the city has already recognized that there are problems with ponding of storm water and meltwater on the south side of Genesee where I live. Let's also look at this project from another perspective, including adjacent to this neighborhood. There are 86 parcels zoned as one family large lot. If you look at the zoning map for the entire city, you'll see that areas with that same designation are very few and far between. Now consider a developer proposing to build a similar three and a half story, 42 unit apartment building requiring a rezoning to a PUD. Let's say they want to build it adjacent to our friends in Vincetta down on Lexington and Mount Vernon Boulevard, or God forbid, along Hendry Boulevard. Would the residents of these neighborhoods accept such a proposal? Would the planning commission or the city commission approve such a proposal? These are questions we need to ask ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Tom Toddweiler. TT.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Tom Toddweiler. I live at 1018 Longfellow. I am here representing the Royal Historical Society. I am on their board and our group, for anybody in the room that is not familiar with us, is committed to the preservation, the education and the keeping of Royal Oak's history. And we consider ourselves a very viable organization in our community. That being said, I'm here to announce and promote our, our group's annual Memorial Day breakfast on Memorial Day from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. breakfast on Memorial Day from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. I invite everybody here, commission and everybody in the room, to attend. Best pancakes in town, folks. Anyway, so, to invite all of you, including Chief Moore and all of his police officers on duty, we hope to see you there, and appreciate it. Can I drop flyers off?
Yes, please, please.
You got donuts for the chief?
They, they just got a hole in the pancake, it's fine. Thank you, Tom. Um, we'll go with this gentleman right here on this side.
I have two exhibits I'd like to give to the city clerk.
Sure, please, thank you, sir.
I'm here in relation to, to the sidewalk number five, West Webster. My name is Felix Schneider, F-E-L-I-X-S-C-H-N-E-I-D-E-R. I've been a resident at 2709 Vincetta for fifty-three years. The current proposal to place a sidewalk on my property, Watering Webster, is a repeat of one from 2015. The commission approved our request to not remove trees and shrubs and replace them with a sidewalk. Nothing has changed since 2015. The city report only mentions removal of very large trees and makes no mention of the many smaller trees and shrubs that provide a green boundary for most of the proposed removal area. That's exhibit one. Webster is a dead-end street, Washington on the east and Roy Park on the west. There is no through-auto traffic, very limited foot traffic. The foot traffic is more than adequately accommodated by the sidewalk on the north side of Webster. I have always thought that Royal Oak was environmentally concerned and friendly. If this project is undertaken, it will result in the removal of significant greenery that sequesters CO2. In addition, it will create CO2 by the diesel fuel used to power all of the equipment to remove the trees and shrubs and do the grading and the other stuff. And finally, concrete is a significant CO2 generator during its production and its application. This proposed project would definitely not be environmentally friendly. The access to the park on the south side of Webster has a dangerous drop-off, and the north side is uneven. And that is exhibit number two. Finally, I'm ninety-one years old, I have no trouble walking across the street to the north side of Webster, and I can walk east and keep my Fitbit happy.
Thank you, Mrs. Schneider. All right, we'll go with the gentleman here on the end. I think that's green, I'm going to go with green shirt, yes. Sometimes the lighting messes with me and I'm all wrong on my colors.
Good evening, my name is Hitesh Shangra, I'm representing Prana Juices at 823 South Main Street, I am number thirteen on the agenda, the last one today. So, we are a cold-pressed juicerie with smoothies and aside bowls, and we submitted our request to have two benches outside the store. And we saw the information in the packet, and we kind of respectfully see it a little differently, and I hope I can showcase what we're thinking through, and hopefully you guys can see our point of view. So, one of the comments called out is that there is no demonstrated need to have a bench outside. Now, we being like a food establishment, so I feel like maybe the decision was made considering we are retail, so we do have customers who come in, wait, place for the order. While this is not like a sit-down restaurant where you can serve a meal, but customers do come in, they place an order and wait. So, a couple of weeks back, we had the Chamber of Commerce, Christine, come in, and they had the staff there, and we had like fifteen folks in here, which is awesome to have, a good problem to have, but I feel like it's a disservice to our customers, even to the citizen, if you want to enjoy a nice meal here. And it's not just at one occasion, we had prior occasion where customers come in, they place an order, they just look around. We have limited seating inside, but having a seat outside, which is like maybe three months or four months in the Michigan winter or weather, gives us good advantage. So I feel like not just from a small business, but even for the residents to have a quality experience would be a good thing. So I feel like that decision to say that we are a retail versus a food service restaurant may be, we don't agree with that, but I feel like we're a food service that does need to have a seating arrangement. And secondly, we started working on this thing last year, we started the engineering team looking for guidance, say, what's approvable, what can we do here? So we're not looking to go big bang and change everything, what's reasonable here? So we started with a church pew bench, can we place it there? Yeah, that's possible. Maybe you can place a bench or table there, outside, table chair, but that would need protection around it. So that expanded our scope, we said, let us back down, we can place very small footprint benches, you can see on the pictures, those are very small benches here. So I feel like the, the concern that they would be like in the right-of-way for people to walk through, we don't agree with that, because we see the lighting outside, we see the space, it's pretty far out. And lastly, the comment was, we feel that, you know, folks can move their benches around, I get that, I understand that. Those benches are something which can secure to the floor here, so they're not something which can, someone can drag and pick on this side or this side. So I feel like we have a way we can secure those benches, so they are no longer a safety hazard, or people can freely move them around here. And lastly, we are located right outside the Lincoln Avenue where, you know, the, if I can say the main entertainment or the food hub of the main street, so this is really not, how should I say, like adding, uh, it's not aesthetically bad per se if we have two benches there, but again, our quest is to please consider that. I'll be here till end of the meeting, let me know if any questions.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
See a hand way in the back, right in the middle? Yes.
Hi, my name's Katrina, I live at 922 Genesee Drive. I would like to speak on item ten regarding the PUD project at the corner of Genesee and Rochester Road. I live about three houses down from your proposed project. I have lived here for about four years now, and this neighborhood provides a safe space, not only a safe space for everyone that's in here, but also for young families that have very young children. This is a tight-knit community, from what I personally experienced. Reminds me of my childhood home in Troy. I've seen how hard our neighbors have fought against this outrageous project, and we feel as though no one is actually taking our concerns seriously. I am one hundred percent in opposition of this project. People who reside in apartments do not have the same respect for a neighborhood that a homeowner does. There is plenty of evidence of the damage a location can take when a transient community comes and goes, year by year. Many of these homes also only provide single-car line driveways, which myself included. There are times where my husband needs to back out of the driveway, I park my car in the street, sometimes, sometimes, excuse me, for days at a time, because it's just easier to not move the cars back and forth. Putting a large community here, again, the traffic study that has not yet been completed, poses a risk to put our street, Genesee, as a cut-through, and I personally have seen cars speed down. Who's to say that I'm not being put at risk now for my car being hit when it's parked? People also utilize Genesee, again, as a cut-through, this will cause an increased risk of cars being hit that are parked, maybe a pedestrian, maybe even a child that's simply playing in their front yard. Many of the homeowners that are here today have been here for well over twenty years, and have a mutual respect to keep our neighborhood clean, quiet, and safe. We would like to keep it that way. Please deny this awful proposal at the end of Genesee. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to this side of the room. Yes, sir, in the corner.
My name is Dino Bistolaridis, I'm a resident of 281 Vincetta Boulevard in Royal Oak, and I'm here to address the sidewalk project that is specifically being planned or recommended for the portion of Webster that backs up to the park that a few people have talked about before. My house and my neighbor's house bounds Vincetta on the front and Webster on the back, and I am actually someone who already has a sidewalk, because I built my house about four years ago. I came home one day, my builder put the sidewalk, and I was like, hey, he was like, oh, you had to do it. I didn't know I had a choice in the matter. And I can tell you that I don't see any benefit to putting the sidewalk there. First of all, like many have mentioned, there's a great canopy of trees, there's wildlife that lives in that, in those trees, that, you know, a lot, it's, it's, you know, it's going to take down the canopy, it's going to change the complexion of the neighborhood. Um, you know, there's not a lot of pedestrian traffic there that, that isn't being serviced by the other side of the road already. And then another thing was, and I didn't even think of this when I came here today, I have this problem, I have to, you know, my, my driver's on the back of my, my house, I have to shovel my driveway, and then in the winter go to the front. So a lot of people are going to have trouble doing both sides, both sidewalks on the both side, especially if they're elderly. So personally, I think there's minimal, minimal benefit to putting that in, number one. Number two is, I think the negatives that come with it are pretty major, and it's going to hurt just the general charm and, and, you know, attractiveness of the neighborhood. That's what we all moved to Royal Oak for, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Oh. Yeah, and the gray sweater, the beige sweater, sorry.
Hi, my name is Judy Smith, I live at 712 West Webster on Royal Oak, and I am talking about the sidewalk planning that would be number five. I'd like to comment on the proposal of the West Webster sidewalk project as a resident of West Webster. This project does not implicate West Webster residents financially, yet all polled residents, and another speaker gave signatures that we had gotten, that we all opposed this wholeheartedly. This project does impact immensely in the physical quality of our neighborhood. We are the people that are going to have to look at the aftermath of some fifty-six trees that would be taken down. We counted them all in favor, and nobody wants this sidewalk or needs it. And as many people have noticed or have spoken, we had an exemption in fifteen, nothing has changed since then, and I'd just like to quote from the Royal Oak website, that "It's a commitment to tree planning and preservation that has earned the city of Royal Oak the National Arbor Day Foundation distinction of Tree City USA every year since 1976." So we're just asking that you please don't change our neighborhood, we love it like it is.
Thank you. All right, and the back in the white shirt, I see?
Hi, everybody, my name's Elizabeth Carpenter, I'm at 1213 Genesee, and I am talking about the Rochester Road proposal. I just want to implore you all to really listen to the residents, I think we've had an overwhelming response, with ninety percent of the residents, the taxpayers, and the business owners in agreement that this particular property is just not well-suited for our neighborhood. We do understand something needs to be there, but this is a majority, this is two-block-long street, the traffic influx is everyone has talked about, but it just doesn't meet the landscape of the neighborhood. If you drive down there, ninety-nine percent of homes are ranch homes, and now we have a tall three-and-a-half-story building overlooking our yards. That, we moved there on purpose. I've spent my whole adult life in Royal Oak, and I just really implore you that, I hope that you do listen to your taxpaying residents and your business owners and reconsider not having this project on Genesee. It is very family-friendly, and you should see the way the neighbors have banded together. So, three hundred signatures for a street of that magnitude is a great number, and I hope that you do listen to us as your taxpaying residents. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, in the back here, yep.
Hi, Mary Bogus, I live at 1418 Ottawa, and I just wanted to say, Royal Oak by its namesake should support the existence of its huge trees, especially oak trees. You highlight Royal Oak as having a healthy tree canopy, and in support of the sustainability this council and administration prides itself in, I ask you to think outside the box. In an effort to pave more sidewalks to make a walkable community, you're proposing to cut down or damage trees, which have the function of reducing the effects of climate change. So I want to give example of Sunnybrook, where there wasn't a sidewalk before, they had put the sidewalk, which is very close to the road, not much right-of-way, that requires fuel now, because when the snowplows throw that snow up, it goes on the sidewalk, and that homeowner, or those homeowners on Sunnybrook, now have to use energy to do the sidewalk because they're required to, and they didn't have to before. If you drive around to other cities where they're creative, you could see where they have curved the sidewalks that they plant around their large existing trees that are already there. So, I'm just asking you, support the tree canopy that's already there, and balance your walkable community sidewalks with what Royal Oak is known for and already exists. Unlike this gentleman back here, these people, Webster, whatever, Vincetta, I didn't even know about this issue when I came here, but I think everything they've said is kind of the same I'm saying. Wildlife, tree canopy, I mean, look at the climate crisis, every tree counts toward reducing that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us out tonight. So, I live for Mr. Cole's reference, lot number one, Walnut and Washington. So, 2015 predates our time in, in Royal Oak, and we've only been here a short while compared to everybody else, so please do understand when I say this caught us completely off guard. And in a sense feels almost capricious without any kind of data or measuring metrics to justify installing sidewalks on the side of our house at our cost. Please do understand I am very, very concerned, if only because it quarters the amount of a lot, effectively. And not only that, we're actually, one gentleman back there mentioned he was on hook for about over $3,000. Should this go through, we'll actually be on hook for almost $7,000, possibly more, considering that we, what we received was an estimate, which, again, I will reiterate, was a complete surprise to us, not knowing the history of the sidewalk improvement program dating back to 2015. And really just, thank you very much for hearing me out. Have a good evening. Thank you.
All right, um, we're in the middle here, the white shirt? Yep.
Good evening, my name's Elizabeth Hollow, and I'm here to speak on behalf of my mother, Lulu Hollow, who lives at 2332 Linwood, that's location number ten, with the sidewalk installation recommendation. And you're okay if I speak for you? I know. So I just want to address, the recommendation has been made to install a sidewalk on the south side of Carmen Avenue, east of Linwood, between Linwood and Woodland Avenue. I'm going to address each of the criteria that was considered when making this recommendation by Ms. Donahue, that there is adequate, so the right-of-way, there's adequate space in the public right-of-way to install the sidewalk, but technically, yes, I can understand that, but the, it's critical to note that the depth of the driveway does not allow a car to be parked in the driveway without parking across the new proposed sidewalk, which really negates the purpose of the sidewalk addition. The photos that you have provided, been provided by the city, shows actually the neighbor to my mother's east, the car is parked, and you can see that it's actually parked across the driveway to the east of her property. Additionally, serious consideration needs to be given that my mother's garage has the original 1950s tilt-to-doors that swing up to open. So the flat part of her driveway where pedestrians would actually walk could be directly, you know, is directly impacted by the distance the door swings up and open, and could potentially hit somebody walking by. So I don't know if that was, was registered for the person, you know, for Ms. Donahue when she was surveying the property. The grade is relatively flat, but the driveway was poured in three sections, so it slopes and then it's flat, and then it slopes again, so that the water would not collect on the proper, on the driveway. So it's not entirely flat, there is a slope to that. The route would complete a continuous The route would complete a continuous route for the neighborhood, but I do want to explain that there is already a continuous route from Hawkins, which, and actually from Woodward, to Woodland on the north side of Carmen. Continuous sidewalk. And it would, it's noted that that would provide better pedestrian access for the neighborhood, but right now there is actually access on the north side. Obstructions. So the one note was made that a 32-inch Norway spruce would need to be removed in order to install the sidewalk. So everybody knows Royal Oak has been called the city of trees because of its extensive tree planting efforts that began in the '30s. In 1936, the city organized a city of trees committee to promote tree planting and study suitable for tree types and the city's commitment to tree preservation. I just do want to make a note that this tree is over 150 years old using the calculations. And I will provide some additional information to--
Sure. If you want to hand it to the clerk.
I will. Yes, thank you. All set.
All right. Who's next? With the glasses in the back?
Hello, my name is Walter Plamel from 627 Royal Avenue, and I'm here to talk about the sidewalk on Ellen Avenue, which my house borders to the back of it. So I think, it says in the report, not recommended, but as a member of a family that owns that house, I still would like to say that I don't think it would be a very good idea for two reasons. One, the amount of relative foot traffic on Ellen is very low, so another sidewalk I don't really think would help, would really help anybody, because most people walk on the side that already has a sidewalk. And two, it would remove a large amount of trees. And three, I think residents of Royal that would foot the bill for that, the vast majority of us don't use Ellen all that much, with the exception of maybe coming home from a walk. So for these three reasons, I would like to say that I would not want a sidewalk being put on Ellen, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thank you. 302 Walnut Avenue, number one on the list regarding sidewalks. So these are my neighbors, and we've never really interacted until this brought us together. And I've met several other people here as well, like pretty fired up about it. So I'd just like to say that we have the only two trees on that stretch, and they're both over 100 years old, and they're fabulous, and it shades our yards. There's a sidewalk across the street, and I watch my neighbors use it all the time. I've never had anyone give me grief about the trees or the flowering trees that are growing right there, or a flowering bush that's quite beautiful right now. Our cars are both approximately 11 feet long, and we would no longer be able to use our And I think that it's pretty nuts, so thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. All right, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to get a chance to finish what my husband started, which was the first speaker for 303 West Houstonia, wow, or location one. Unfortunately, didn't get a chance to show you, but in the packet that he provided originally, you could see basically this canopy that we have here in our neighborhood on our street in front of our house or the side of our house. There's actually a tree here that's actually a nice little tree. It's not super little, but it, compared to the giant sugar maple we have, it looks fairly small, but it was never even documented as this would be a tree that'd be removed as well, so we'd actually lose two big trees, two trees on our lot. Again, one being the sugar maple, it's over 100 years old. And then our neighbor with the beautiful oak that's well over 100 years old. And just to show you too, this is the sidewalk, sorry I'm shaking, but I do this very often. This is a sidewalk that already exists on Washington, right next to our house, not on our curbside, but across the street, and it's wide open, right? It's beautiful sidewalk, there's nothing wrong with it, and it's wide open, there's no trees. And then you want to take something like this, rip all this down, so you can put this, two of them, on the same street. Just to make the point that this isn't impeding, what was it saying? The sidewalk will provide better pedestrian access for the neighborhood. This is the access for the neighborhood. It's fine, there's nothing wrong with it, but you want to take down these beautiful old trees, which again, back to echoing what many people have said, as a tree city, part of the responsibility is the preservation of the trees. These should be preserved. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, one more thing. When, almost forgot this. When I, I noticed somebody came up to our house and taking pictures of our trees, and I asked him, "What are you doing?" And he said, "Well, I've been asked to come out and assess two units, this unit and that unit," which was our maple tree and the oak tree. And I said, "Oh, my God, are they going to try to take these things down?" So this is beautiful, these are gorgeous. They, the fireflies are in here, they provide shade, everybody loves the trees, number of things. And he looked around, and I said, "And who are you?" And he said that he's the city parks and arbor, I guess evaluator. And I said, "Okay." And so he looked around and he said, "You know, you're right, I really don't see any point for a sidewalk here." And then we got our assessment. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will go to this side, and we'll go right here in the sweater, to the right, or to the left, yes, you.
Hello, my name's Corinne, and I live at 632 West Webster. I am right across the street from the proposed sidewalk that's going to go on the back of the Vincenta property, properties. I just wanted to say that the homeowners are not the only people that live in Royal Oak. I have watched over the past eight years a family of Cooper's Hawks raise their children. I've watched the same family raise juveniles, those juveniles are now raising their babies. I've had a great-horned owl in my yard. It is amazing that in the city I have raccoons visit, I have turkeys visit, I watch the Hawks, I watch, I, great-horned owls are huge. And we talk about rats in the city. These are the animals that are going to protect us. Poison's not going to work, us going out and dry icing the holes is not going to work. Don't take down useless, or don't take down huge canopies to put in useless sidewalks on a two-block street. There, there's no, there's no foot traffic, there's barely any automobile traffic. That's it.
Thank you. We'll go with that right up here, sir? Yes, you, in the, I'm going to say yellow, but it could be a yellow-beige or an off-white.
My name's Marvin Zimberg. This for item number five. I've been here for about 40 years. I live about eight doors, I live on West Webster, 708 West Webster, and I live about eight doors from Bicycle Hill. And I really think that West Webster, this canopy of trees that we're talking about should almost become, and Royal Oak should kind of make it the gateway to Bicycle Hill, Ramirez Park. It doesn't have to just be a park and a street. It actually should flow in, right into the park, and they should spend some money and really join the two and make it just a great street and park. I believe our street, West Webster Road, is one of the most beautiful inviting roads in the city of Royal Oak, Michigan. If the city takes it upon themselves to steal our green belt and canopy from us, they are destroying one of the most walkable and desirable streets in Royal Oak area. Also, when young people want to relocate to another city, they Google walkable cities, looking at the walkability numbers of the city for comparison. Our street is one of the most desirable locations to live in, the city of Royal Oak. All in all, we're asking that you, the city, does not destroy our beautiful green belt canopy area by cutting down our trees, installing cement sidewalks in a place of green environmental desirable areas. That's all.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Okay, we will go with Mr. Harrison.
My nose started running just as you called on me. Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford, Royal Oak, lifetime member, resident. I'd like to address the Rochester Road development. The proposed building is composed of nominally 600-square-foot units with only two exterior stairways for egress. No internal stairs or elevators are provided for this nearly four-story building. It's like a New York tenant, tenement building. I've heard the term stack 'em and pack 'em is the new mantra for affordable housing in Royal Oak. My concern is that this building will be nothing more than an extended stay motel, like on Woodward Avenue, that took us 25 years to get rid of these motels after drug sales, prostitution, two murders, one of whom was my neighbor Nancy Daly. We need equal treatment under the law. This apartment building proposes 42 units under a PUD, whereas 16 units are permitted under the current zoning. Compared to a 4,400-square-foot single-family home that the zoning board recently required to eliminate an internal space of 400 square feet above the attached garage on Henry, where the existing homes are of similar size, ranging up to 7,000 square feet. Both, interestingly, both projects are represented by the same attorney. We need judicious use of the PUD process. I'm concerned that the abuse of the PUD process is being allowed in order to make the form-based code, as proposed in the new master plan, look more attractive when we do not know what the form-based code would allow versus the current single-family zoning. Reducing existing home prices is not the answer to providing more affordable housing in Royal Oak. Royal Oak home values must maintain equity within, with the surrounding communities in order to maintain economic mobility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. We'll go with the black or navy blue shirt. Did you get closer? I can tell. Looks more navy blue now.
Navy blue. Hi, thanks for having, giving me a chance. My name's John O'Keefe. I live at 2325 Oliver Road. It's number, side, I'm here for the sidewalk, it's location number nine on there. We were exempted in 2015, like, like many of the people here, we were also exempted. I think this first started in 2002 when Bill Urick was the mayor. We were exempted at that time also. We're the only house on this portion of Oliver. It's a dead-end road, it's just a gravel road. So a sidewalk literally just ends, would end at our house, there's no, no other community around. Our neighbor, who is on Bonneview, 1708 Bonneview, couldn't make it tonight, but I just wanted to express his, Michael Laswito also is not in favor of having a sidewalk continued. His sidewalk ends at his back door. To get sidewalk to our driveway, it would have to extend through his backyard to our, through our area. So just requesting that it not be, not be built. Okay, that was it?
Thank you. All right. You will go with, in the, oh, I'll start from right to left, we'll be in the far back corner. Yes. Are we together? Okay.
I'm Catherine Dukin, and we live at 2935 Vincenta Boulevard. We are not on the sidewalk recommended list at this time. We were exempt in 2015, and there was a previous exemption with the previous owner. We've been in the house over 20 years. We just want to make sure it stays that way. We're not recommended at this, at this point for a sidewalk. There is a lot of water. The pictures that you were given, the photographs, don't really show, even though there's a description that there's a very steep rise on the property. We live at the top of the ravine at the corner of Marywood and Vincenta. If I stand in the street, my fence is about the top of that Royal Oak sign. That's how steep it is. We have steps that go down, it's the only way to access the side of the, the side of the property. If you put a sidewalk in there, there is a very large tree that would be killed because right now it's got girdled roots. The sidewalk would have to go against the curb. There is so much water that comes there because Marywood is a creek, and Vincenta is a creek. And so the massive amount of water there has already destroyed the street that was torn up and replaced a couple, a couple years ago. The water comes up from underneath the cement four days after a rain. While I'm here, I want to support the people who are on Webster behind us. Since I live at the corner of Vincenta and Marywood, I can see how much foot traffic and automobile traffic there isn't. Marywood deadends at Webster, and there is very, very little traffic. There is a sidewalk on the east side of Marywood, and there's a sidewalk on the north side of Webster. I don't see any reason for anyone to lose that canopy, the amount of wildlife that we have, because that canopy exists. It's an extension of the park, it keeps it woodsy, it keeps it cool, and it supports the walkability and the peacefulness of that area. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah. Hi, Dimitri Dukin, husband, also been in the house 20-plus years. I'd just like to say, so speaking for, with, aiding our neighbors, the Webster side is actually the low point of that entire subdivision behind us. So Murray and the rest of the parks, almost clear to, I forget what the park is, on 13. But so all of that water comes straight down. The more cement you add, the more you give that water less place to be held, the worse it gets, and in the winter, it's already really icy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? We'll go with the gentleman in the yellow shirt.
My name is Brian Herman. My wife and I have lived here since 1987 at 1402 Genesee. I'm here to speak about the Rochester Road project. On April the 9th of this year, the planning commission recommended for an approval of change for zoning at the 4704 Rochester Road. This change from mixed-use two to the planned unit development is clearly not in the best interests of the area residents. Let be clear, this project is not a near miss. It exceeds every measurable, summed by two and a half times. It's a four-story-tall, commercial-looking apartment building in a one- and two-story residential neighborhood. Let's get it straight, four stories, not three and a half. Three and a half is a size delineation on the square footage of the upper floor. There was no attempt to make this building appear consistent with the neighborhood. A design that looked like townhomes or brownstones of a smaller size would be more consistent with the neighborhood as required for a PUD. The planning commission has given priority to the developer and consistently dismissed the residents' concerns. The petitioner did not demonstrate project compliance with the PUD. The petitioner did not demonstrate project compliance with the PUD. These concerns include the size of the building, the lack of a traffic study, the use of a public parking lot in alleys as an entrance and exit, building height, parking, and others. Mr. Ellison stated in his experience that parking and traffic concerns were always common to all projects but completely unwarranted. The projects had always worked out. Worked out for whom? Let's revisit some of those projects and ask that worked out and see how the neighbors feel about them now. The planning commission has not given priority to the neighbors failing to recognize that if a project doesn't work out, there's no remedy for the neighborhood. You can't just snap your fingers and have it go away. This requires extra diligent examination of this project. In the April 9th meeting, there were two temporary germents to quell the unruly crowd. I was part of that. Upon return, there was immediate action by the commission suggesting that there was conversation between the commissioners. Does that constitute, that constitute an open meeting? I would like a copy of the meeting minutes for the off-dias conversations. The city commission needs to return this recommendation to the planning commission for them to do their job, and the developer needs to redesign this project so it fits on the lot and it's consistent with the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. All right, who's next? We have, yes ma'am, the blue sweater here in the middle?
I'm Linda Campbell. I live at 1128 Genesee now, but I've lived in Royal Oak all my life. I'm a fourth-generation Royal Oaker. I'm here to talk, I didn't plan to, but about the Rochester Road development. And I, it's a very family-friendly neighborhood. People are always locking their pets and stuff down, and I would like it to stay that way. And I find it ironic that when we built our house, the zoning commission capped the square footage and footprint on my half-acre lot, but something that's just a little over two times as big, they're trying to put a lot of square footage, and it definitely won't fit the neighborhood. Whoever lives close, it's certainly going to block their view of any sunset or anything. It, it just doesn't seem appropriate to put that much. And I'm concerned about the traffic. We have a couple cars, and most of the people in the neighborhood, that's what they would have. And you're talking about adding probably 40 to, 40-plus cars, and like people have said, cutting through the neighborhood to avoid the traffic and stuff on Rochester is very likely to happen. And so I'm concerned about that.
Thank you. Uh, yes, right here in the black.
Hi there, my name's Rebecca Otten, and I'm at 29372 Woodward Avenue. I have had my business on Woodward for about nine years. I've been in Royal Oak 23 years with my business, and I started out at 414 South Washington. And I left there because my landlord couldn't afford to fix the roof, so it kept raining into my business. So I left there, and I went to 517 South Washington, and above me was a makeshift hotel that Royal Oak was trying to run from. And I had high school kids who could not work in my back room because it smelled like pot. So I left there, and I went to Woodward. And over the last couple of years, I've been there about nine years, over the last couple of years, I find a lot of just debris all over the back area of my store. I find bottles of beer. I find tons of garbage in my dumpster, and I just, I feel like I'm constantly running from garbage in Royal Oak. I am in contract to buy 4732 Rochester Road, and listening to all these people about the proposed project that's going into Rochester Road, six, you know, 60 cars is, is concerning, but the number of units is even more concerning for 600 square feet, because I know the type of people that are going to be moving in there. And if this was something that was a really great project, we would be putting it in the center of Royal Oak instead of the perimeter of Royal Oak. I think it's the wrong project for that footprint. And it sounds like your residents here are very opposed to it. I'm going to be closing on a property next week, and it's going to impact the parking lot that I'm going to be in, and am I going to find beer bottles and stuff all over the back of my parking lot again? And I just, I'm really surprised. I pull from two hours away. People come from two hours to get to my business, and I work very hard to be in Royal Oak. And even when I travel to New York, people say, "Oh, I've heard of Royal Oak." And I go to New York four times a year, and it just doesn't seem like the right project for that footprint. I really, really hope that you consider what everyone here has said. Thank you.
All right, who's next? Uh, hand over here on the edge, yeah.
Nancy Poprovsky, thank you for listening. I would like to make some requests. For the benefit of our hearing and vision impaired audience in person and at home, could you please, when voting, either take a roll call or raise your hands when voting yes or no? By just saying "all" in favor, like saying "aye" or oppose "no," it makes it difficult to tell who voted what. Another request and concern is about the planning commission minutes from the April 9th Rochester Road project. The draft minutes acknowledged all developers, architects, attorneys, et cetera, and two full pages of descriptions on this property seeking approval. There is absolutely no acknowledgement of the 22 residents who took the time and effort in person to give their important testimony during the public comment and hearing about why this project does not meet necessary criteria and should not be, be approved. In good conscience and accuracy, these people should not be omitted. I urge the city commission to review the planning commission April 9th public comment and hearing, then amend with the 22 opposing and three approving citizens, at least in number. Please discuss, discuss the draft minutes with the planning commission and amend for accuracy and respect to the public before moving forward. My next concern is the city proclaiming that May is older American month, and that we need to help our seniors stay comfortable and age in place. The Rochester Road project without an elevator is not senior-friendly or people-friendly in general. If younger residents have handicapped family or friends and live on upper floors, then what? Having only 14 units below without an elevator is prejudiced to any handicapped visitor that needs to visit above these 14 units. Also, the city says we need affordable housing. On two occasions that the planning commission comments, I asked for a rental price. They still won't reveal it. Will a family of four be accommodated if they need affordable housing, size-wise, economically, and if they have a handicapped visitor? And after years of begging the city to stop cutting down mature trees, my faith in humanity is being restored by the Vincetta neighborhood. City commission, please restore my faith in humanity about saving mature trees and listen, so this doesn't happen anymore in Royal Oak. Thank you.
All right, who's next? So you're down here with the green shirt on, light green? Yes.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Paul Weidig, and my wife and I live on 1419 Huron Avenue, which is part of the, of the Genesee, Ottawa neighborhood. So I'm here to talk about the, uh, the Rochester Road development. And I guess what I really just want to let you know is, you know, I grew up here in Royal Oak a long, long time ago. Moved to Colorado for a long time, met my wife. As I, we got older, I wanted to come back to Michigan, and, and so we looked a long time before we decided to come back to Royal Oak. And, and we loved the feel and the look of our neighborhood, the, the trees, the closeness, just the, it's not private, it's just, it's just slow and filled with lots of, lots of people walking and walking their dogs and their kids and that kind of thing. And, and we took zoning into account when we made our choice, and, and we sort of count on that. We, we, and so I just want you to know that we, we count on you all looking out for our interests and, and, and protecting us from all kinds of things that come along, and some of the things are, are people that are, their main focus is, is a financial project. I mean, I get financial projects, but just, we're counting on you to, to consider what we all need. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? See a hand in the far back?
Good evening. My name is Frank Hoprest, and I'm here for the second time, because I was here in 2015. I'm also going to speak on behalf of my neighbor. We are item number three for the sidewalk. I think it's a great misnomer to call this a sidewalk improvement program. I'm reminded by those words of Thomas Sowell, who said, "There are no solutions, only trade-offs." If you would propose to install this sidewalk on our little street, this is for Mary Street, my neighbor took a photograph, I'm going to leave this with you, but our two garages are approximately 15, 16 feet from the back of the curb. It will basically mean that we will lose the right to park our cars. I'm reminding you of Section 115-3 prohibited parking, paraphrased blah, 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 on a sidewalk. You can't block the sidewalk. Can you imagine going to your car at 8:00 in the morning, getting a ticket? And if we can't park on our cars, then we're talking about a taking, you know, it's condemning our driveways. We have about five, maybe four feet, and then would come a five-foot sidewalk, and then we have about like six or seven feet of right-of-way. There just isn't room. This was the justification in 2015, and also this was the discussion in 2001. It's a stubby little street, four blocks long. There's a great sidewalk on the north side of the street. Anybody that wants to use a sidewalk can walk over the 25, 30 feet and use the sidewalk. So she is in California. I understand she contacted you, but there is a letter from her, and I'm going to speak on my behalf, but we have the same sentiment. We have two garages. We're going to lose both driveways, and I'm going to ask that we are again exempted. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? So, yeah, okay, she, because your daughter spoke before, so you could come up this time. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Lulu Hallow. I'm sure some of you know me by now. My property was exempted from the sidewalk improvement program in 215, as well as many other previous sidewalk programs over the past 63 years. Nothing about the existing conditions have changed since the previous exemptions were made, except that the Norway spruce has become even more majestic. Additionally, since this 215 exemption, there is now a continuous sidewalk and carman from Hawkins to Woodland. As an actogenarian and a fixed income, paying over $6,000 estimated cost would be a severe financial hardship. Thank you for your consideration to exempt my property from a sidewalk addition.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Yes, sir.
My name's Bob Stugland. I live on 4404 Rochester Road, corner Bowman. I grew up on Genesee Street. My brother Rudy still lives on Genesee Street. I walk my dogs down there all the time. I'm always right there, okay? My other brother lives on Huron. Many of us took petitions around. We got over 300 signatures in those petitions that are against the building of the project on Rochester Road. Only three people refused to sign once they get off my porch. We even got some additional signatures from Claussen, which is right across the street, who will also be affected by this project. Now, a block and a half below this project are the Amber Apartments between Ottawa and Donald. The property is about the same size as this property, okay? There's 14 units there, two stories, two buildings, eight units in each building. Perfect example of, of green space and parking and probably a benefit to the community, which this would not be. The only drawback to those apartments, because I have a good friend that lives on Donald, right on the other side of the fence of those, of those apartments, is the dumpsters are always open, okay? And he's got rats all the time. So if he's got rats with 12 units, I can imagine what 42 units would be. Who's going to take care of the dumpsters? Who's going to make sure that they're closed? Think about it. We haven't even discussed that yet. We haven't discussed the rat problem. Now, there's a rat problem on Donald, and there'll be a bigger rat problem in that whole area. Now, I was one of the people that was disruptive of the last meeting, okay? And I was so annoyed because I had the feeling that people that were at that meeting, that sitting up there, that every one of them could not say to me, or say to us, "Yes, I was there. I went to Genesee. I looked at it. I walked around there. I got out of my car and walked around there." And I would respectfully request that everybody who votes tonight say, "I went there. I'm voting for it because of this reason, or I'm voting against it because of whatever reason, but I was there. I went there. I feel your pain. I know what, how you're feeling. I came to your, I came to your, your street." Now, I shouldn't say this, but there was a councilman, councilwoman, when she was running, came to my door, said all kinds of good things. I would gladly meet her tomorrow at that project and see, and have her look at it through my eyes. I wish she would come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stugland. All right, who's next? Yes, sir.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Ray Allen. I live at 922 Genesee, three houses away from the Rochester Item 10 project. My grandfather built the house in 57, grew up playing as a kid in the front yard, riding my bicycle up to Claussen, right through that spot that's going to be a four-story apartment building. Didn't always live in Royal Oak, grew up outside, and more and more, my friends, as we go over, we talk, "Oh, you remember meeting up with so-and-so at this place?" "Oh, yeah, it's a giant apartment building now." "Oh, remember that bike path in the forest we used to, we used to go through to get to 7-Eleven? Oh, yeah, it's a giant apartment complex now. Our city name is Royal Oak." And I feel for all these people here tonight, just trying to save their trees on Vincetta and whatever. Meanwhile, you're going to cut down like four mature silver maples at the end of our street. I mean, the idea that we have 300 petitions, 300 signatures from our neighborhood here, we came at the planning committee, you guys are supposed to be here to support the community. And as a lifelong taxpayer and a... And as a lifelong taxpayer and a young voter, I would hope that you guys would see the community, see our outrage against this PUD and deny it. I mean, 16 units, 16 apartments and business space could go there, so instead we have to go through a process of approval for 42? I mean, if it's not for the trees, if it's not for the citizens of the neighborhood, what are we doing this for? For greed? I mean, what else could it be? I've heard stuff about campaign funds and, business is business, but this is a nice, old, mature tree neighborhood, young families, old families, and you guys are going to set up a giant come-and-go transient community. Anybody who's lived in an apartment complex knows that they get trashed, people, like I've heard people say that they're beer bottles, but we've all seen it all, there's no illusions here. And the idea that we could have a 16-unit apartment building at the end of the street that does not dwarf the skyline, does not shine lights into people's houses, is, I mean, seems ridiculous. So, thank you for your time. Good luck with your decision.
All right, who's next? We'll go over here in the corner, next?
I've been a resident of Royal Oak for 50 years. I said last time I was here, 38 years. Well, we've been in the home we're in right now for 38 years, but we were at Lincoln for 12 years, so 50 years. And this is again, is where you say we don't look a day over 55. But I would like to say that I feel my heart goes out to the people in Vincetta about their sidewalks as well. We lost a lot of trees in my neighborhood on Ottawa when Mark Twain School was taken down in the woods, and we miss it even today. We look to you to protect us, to respect our families, our neighborhoods, and we count on you to do that. It's very disheartening when it doesn't seem to happen. And I was recently looking at an old newspaper from September 2023, and it was about a development on 11 Meyer Road, let's see, where is it there? It was called Planning Commission Reviews Four-Story Royal Development on 11 Meyer Road. And there's a quote here, I'd like to say about, from, of the mayor, who said, "We don't want overflow parking into the neighborhood with any project." And we know that that's going to happen. In fact, when y'all went and had a recess, when you came back, it was just a terrible surprise to hear that you said, "Oh, you don't need as many parking places as, you know, you allowed for." I mean, we were just blown away that that was a suggestion, when we know that it's going to change the neighborhood greatly. It looks like Buckingham Palace. I mean, it's, you know, it looks really nice, but in our neighborhood, it is a mistake. And of course, 300 people said that, and if you go ahead and okay this, what does that say about our trust in you, when we look to you to respect our neighborhoods? And that's 300 signatures. We don't want you to wipe away a PUD either and micromanage the things that are going up in Royal Oak. We would like you to be proactive and look for things that, when there's open land, that, find something that really looks good for the city and, and would make more sense. And that's not dollars and cents, that's this kind of sense.
Thank you, Ms. Wall. All right, who's next? Yes, sir.
Thank you all for, for doing what you do. Very lucky to have a very good city council, you guys do a lot of very smart things down here. Let me start by actually saying, my name's Ross Gilders, I live on Genesee between Campbell and Vermont. I've been in Royal Oak for 15 years, the last 12 of which on Genesee. I own and operate a law practice in downtown Royal Oak. My wife and I are in downtown Royal Oak several evenings a week. Very happy to live here, and even happier to live in the Genesee neighborhood. Just lovely people, great neighbors, lots of foot traffic, lots of waving, we know each other's names and we, we really are happy, and it's such a convenient place to live as well, easy access to the highway. I could see why it would be an attractive location for a new housing development, and I'm a big proponent of fair and equal housing. But I vehemently oppose this project. First and foremost, I, I, traffic is our biggest issue in, in our neighborhood, like, I think it might be our only issue. But it is a huge problem. I, I've complained about it years ago, it's probably almost 10 years ago now, and there were two separate traffic studies commissioned at that time, the numbers were off the charts. If you guys keep that data, I implore you to look at it. And the remarkable thing about the data was that it was conducted at times that, you know, I don't know what the agenda was, but one of them was like right before 4th of July, I mean, everybody was out of town. And then another one was like leading up to Labor Day, again, it was like no one in town, the strips were way down by the stop sign, so I, I don't know if those things register speed, I'm not a expert, but, but if they do, I mean, the speed figures would have been way off because again, it was, you know, eight feet from a stop sign way at the end of the street. Between 7:00 AM and like 10:00 AM every weekday morning, and then again between like 3:30 PM and 7:00 PM, I mean, there's cars whipping down our street like it's Campbell, I mean, it's, it looks like it's, or I-75 even. And it's a huge problem for this neighborhood. I have a two-year-old son and, and he started running recently and he grass, street, it makes no difference, and, and to add this kind of traffic through our neighborhood right at the end of our street, when traffic is already our biggest problem, like it, it, not only is this, like, it doesn't fit our neighborhood, it exacerbates a very serious problem in the neighborhood. And in fact, it's like the only thing that could make, you know, our, our biggest problem even worse. And I would like to add that there are a lot of alternatives available for this property, and I don't feel like they're being explored, but like, I, I don't know who currently owns that parcel, but I feel like they intentionally kind of ran it into the ground. I have an interest in commercial property, I've been shopping around for some, for some years now, they were charging like five grand a month for, to rent that property, and meanwhile, I mean, it's a tiny little building, it's really just one main room with a bank vault and like a side office. The price to run it was off the charts, I mean, it's a very interesting property, they, they sabotaged it for this project, and nobody wants it. I could, I know my three minutes are up.
Thank you, sir.
My wife couldn't make it tonight, so I'm kind of speaking on her behalf too, also my neighbor.
We gotta be, we gotta be respectful of the three-minute time limit for everyone.
All right, fair enough. Nobody wants this in our neighborhood, nobody.
Thank you. All right, who is next? Going once, going twice, all right, come on up.
Hi, I'm Randy Houston, I live at 1310 Genesee. I didn't plan on speaking because really it's the same thing you're hearing from all the residents in Genesee. It's too big for the property, it's that simple. How we got to the PUD and went from a mixed-use 16 units to 42, it's amazing, like the benefits we're going to get, let's see, energy-efficient appliances, that was listed as a benefit to the community, amazing. But I wasn't prepared to speak, but I'm with my neighbors, we don't want to eat, we don't want this big of a, a complex at the end of the street, it just adds to problems we already have, so please don't approve it.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, we're going to close public comment now and bring the meeting back to this side of the table, which brings us to item six, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda at this time? Okay, does anyone want to make a motion on the consent agenda at this time? Commissioner Douglas?
Motion.
A motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog? All right, discussion on the consent agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All of us in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion passes. All right, that brings us to item seven, which is a public hearing and approval of Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2024 Annual Action Plan. I see Mr. Murphy is here, but maybe his microphone is not. Now, he's Chief Morris, now everything you say has that much more authority.
The city receives its Community Development Block Grant Funds, or CDBG funds, from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, most people know it as HUD, and that's to create viable communities. We identify and implement activities to primarily benefit low-to-moderate income residents of the city by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and economic development opportunities for them. To receive our annual entitlement grant amount, we must create what's referred to as an annual action plan. And it identifies the community's needs, and it also identifies activities and associated funding levels of how we'll utilize the funds to, to address those needs in the upcoming fiscal year. We do that by distributing notice to partner agencies in different city departments. Those that are interested do submit an application, and the city's Rehabilitation Board of Appeals reviews those applications in light of the anticipated funding amount, and they make a recommendation to you. The board had reviewed the applications and was scheduled to hold a public hearing at their April 16th meeting, but unfortunately, there wasn't a quorum at that meeting. So therefore, it's necessary for you to hold a public hearing tonight prior to discussing the annual action plan, activities and funding levels available for you. So I think it's appropriate that we hold a public hearing. Upon closure of the public hearing, I can go through the recommended activities and funding levels, and we can engage in conversation as well.
Great. Well, given the nature of this, I won't ask for any questions from Mr. Murphy until we have the public hearing completed, so I'm opening up the public hearing, the same rules as public comment apply. The only rule here is that you have to be actually talking about the Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2024 Annual Action Plan. So all comments have to be germane and relevant to that topic. So is anybody here to speak on that public hearing tonight? I know you guys are probably taken aback, overwhelmingly exciting, the agenda item no one expected. All right, well then, I'm going to close the public hearing and hand it back over to the commission here. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Murphy? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Murphy, I see that we budgeted $35,000 for the Roses program. This is a program which provides services to seniors who have financial needs, which range from small home repairs to snow removal to leaf raking and so forth. Can you tell us more about what your experience has been in the past in, in terms of the service levels, and what we do to market the program to make sure that seniors know of its availability?
In anticipation of that question, I did gather some data regarding the level of service that we've been providing this fiscal year, and we've been assisting year-to-date 115 different households, and we, we've had contracted worker services that have provided those chores to the tune of just over 1,600 total hours of assistance. The average, to give you a little perspective on the, on the households that are benefiting from the program, the average household income for individuals taking advantage of the program is $22,846. And so far, we've expended about $24,000 of the $35,000 budget for this fiscal year. So, a little bit less than on track, on track of, for what the budget is, but several, several more months to go.
So it is maybe a question for our senior services, our senior center services director, than you, but you're here, so I'll ask you that question. And I know I read the Insight Quarterly magazine and I see articles about the Roses program in there, but what else do we do to really actively, because I've, if we provided service to, would say, 100 and some households in the past year, it just seems to me that there are more households than that that would need the sorts of things we offer, and I just want to make sure we're robustly letting people know in multiple ways, recognizing that perhaps seniors are not as, getting as much digital information as some of the rest of us, just like to know how we are marketing the program and, and trying to expand it.
I know that we've had articles in local newspapers, it's advertised as a flyer at the senior center, it's included in the different publications that the, that the senior center does have for available, that they mail out, and that they have, have print copies of available at the senior center. So there certainly can be more individuals that can take advantage of the program as long as they fit that lower income spectrum, and would be happy to work with the senior center to, to advertise the program more for next fiscal year, absolutely.
Well, I would hope that we, I mean, we have an, we have an aging-in-place plan that we've created, there are many needs in that, many things that, to be accomplished, and I'm looking to perhaps the, not only the committee that we've created to help advance that plan, but also our staff to make sure that we are actively promoting the availability of these services, because I feel like we're not. That's all.
Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So as we all know, I sit on the Rehab Board of Appeals, which talks about this plan the first time around. Unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum last month, however, we have talked about this plan numerous times leading up to that. This is, this plan has been kind of a continuation of our last handful of years, what we have allocated and we're, we're allocating funds to. So while the Rehab Board was not able to vote on this because we didn't hold a public hearing because of quorum, this was the intention of the board at prior meetings also, that's something to consider. And while there's so many people here, I just want to highlight, there is so many good things within this program. A $600,000 improvement to Clausen Park, which my son practices soccer, and I can tell you is very tired, the baseball diamond there is more of a dust patch than a baseball diamond. So I'm excited for yet again, another phenomenal park improvement. For the last several years, we have seen parks improved at a great scale from Sullivan Park in the north, Lawson Park in the south, many different parks. So this is a great way to, you know, we have 51 parks in our town, and this is one of the ways that we are able to upgrade them and keep us the desirable community that we are. I also want to point out the home improvement. Commissioner Douglas, you just spoke about the Roses program, but another program that's pegged at 602,000 is the Housing Rehabilitation Program. This program is for people, once again, to low-to-moderate income. Some of them get completely forgivable loans, and then others get very low interest loans that pay back over a considerable amount of time. And these are used to directly improve their quality of life from the day that the construction happens. So these programs are great, and it's a way that our community development team and senior services team are really teaming up to make sure that, keeping Royal Oak affordable for seniors and those in need. So I will be supporting this and move to approve.
Okay, with motion by Commissioner Colo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt. Discussion. I'll just add, thank you, Commissioner Colo, for articulating the exact situation and also highlighting, I think that's another important point, the rehabilitation program. Often people, especially, you know, people on fixed incomes are having to decide to leave their house or get a roof replaced, and they have no place to turn to, and these funds are critical to helping people stay in their homes, get the repairs they need at a very low interest rate, or in some cases, forgivable loan, so we can make sure that, you know, folks who, especially have owned their home for a very long time, have the ability to stay in it. So, spread the word, I mean, well, since there's a crowd here tonight, spread the word about Roses. We want to use that funding, if you know of somebody that needs a little assistance with moving snow- If you know of somebody that needs a little assistance with moving snow, cutting grass, whatever it may be, we have some funding set aside to help those individuals. Of course, always, you know, if you're able-bodied, you want to bring over a lawn mower and do it yourself, that's cool too, but not everyone has that opportunity. So, you know, get the word out there as best you can. It's a great program. And I've had my wife's distant family member express to us how it was so helpful for their elderly father to keep his pride and stay in the house that he raised his family in, but just got a little extra help from the Roses program, so. All right, so any other discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to number eight, approval of interim city manager employment agreement. Mr. Grotowski.
Thank you, Mayor. A task for your consideration for approval this evening is a proposed employment agreement for interim city manager, Mr. Mark Wallenweber, who is present this evening. We are very fortunate to be in a position where Mr. Wallenweber has just retired, has served decades as city managers for multiple Michigan municipalities successfully, and brings with him a plethora of his years of experience and talent to help the city in the process while the city commission entertains its search for the next city manager. If the city commission is interested in desiring to appoint him to the position, the appropriate resolution is presented for your consideration. I will add that the resolution needs to reflect that, in addition to what's written there, that the city commission would also approve the mayor and city clerk signing the agreement, which I neglected to put in the resolution, but needs to be a part of it. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Grotowski? No questions. For the public, if you weren't aware, our interim city manager, Todd Fenton, who's been with the city for 10 years, deputy, led up our Economic Development Department, did an amazing job helping, even in the worst of times, in Roylo, keeping our retail restaurant and other businesses thriving in the city of Roylo, the best considering all the headwinds that faced our region and faced our nation. And because he was good at what he did, he got an offer from the private sector that I don't blame him for taking. And so this has created a situation where we need an interim city manager, and Mr. Wallenweber is a great choice. Had a chance to chat with him and talk to him, and brings a tremendous amount of experience that can help us on our journey before we get the next permanent city manager. And I have to say, I'm really disappointed. I thought you guys were all here tonight to say goodbye to Todd, that it was Rochester Road and sidewalks. But for those of you who didn't know Todd, he likes to stay a little bit behind the scenes, you know, keeping his nose to the grindstone. We're going to miss him. But that's why this agenda item is here tonight, so. Any questions? All right, any motions? Commissioner Collo?
I move approval of the resolution presented with the addition of the mayor and city clerk being able to execute it.
Motion by Commissioner Collo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. All right. Commissioner Hunt?
Well, I'll just say, I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Wallenweber as well, and like the mayor stated, he's more than capable of stepping into Todd's big shoes to fill. And I'm quite very confident that he'll be able to hit the ground running and continue to keep Roylo moving in the direction that it's currently moving in until we can find an interim. So I'm happy to hopefully have him aboard.
Anybody else? All right, well, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Wallenweber, welcome back from retirement again. Our condolences to your wife, but we're glad to have you on board, and based on our last conversation, I know you're going to hit the ground running, and look forward to working with you and leveraging all the experience that you're going to bring to the table during this period, so thank you. All right. This brings us to number nine, the review of potential new sidewalk locations, 2024 Sidewalk Improvement Program. Just a few comments before I hand it over to our city engineer, Ms. Donahue. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I know it seems like, oh, we were just here in 2015 and back. I mean, I feel like half my time up here over the last 12 years has been sidewalks. And nobody wants to cut down trees, nobody wants to, you know, impair neighborhoods, but there is a process in place that goes all the way back to when Roylo first became a city. And, you know, if you live in a house that's from the early 1900s or beyond, whoever built your neighborhood, whoever built your house, put a sidewalk in. And that builder paid for it, you paid for it in the price of your house. And so in recent history, every six years, we go through each, we divide the city up into six bits, and we go just work around and find out what sidewalks need to be repaired. And engineering goes and says, makes an engineering decision. They don't look at all the other qualifications, they look strictly at engineering criteria, and then they make recommendations based on that engineering criteria alone to the city commission, where we take on the other decision factors, whether or not it's appropriate to install a sidewalk or not in that particular neighborhood. So I want to give her a little bit, and her team, a little bit of grace and space, because they're just, you know, doing their job in accordance to the standards of engineering. But the process is what it is, and it comes to us, and then ultimately, we decide to move forward with this. And I can tell you that the list is getting tinier and tinier and tinier every year, because at least I feel like we've gone through this and put in a lot of sidewalks where we thought we needed them. And for me, at least, this seems to be the, you know, residual recurrence, so. But that's what happens when you become the old guy on the board, so. City engineer Donahue.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and city commissioners. As you mentioned, tonight I'm here to get your direction regarding potential new sidewalks where none currently exist within this year's sidewalk target area. The overall goal here is to provide continuous sidewalks that link neighborhoods, schools, and community facilities, with the overarching goal to create a highly walkable city. As you noted, every single one of these sidewalks here was exempted back in 2015, and cyclically, we reevaluate them each time we're in the city for the sidewalk program. This year, there are 17 locations under consideration, and they're shown here up on the screen just for reference. The red ones are where staff is recommending an exemption. The green ones are where staff is recommending installation, but of course, that decision rests with you. The properties that could potentially be affected were notified of this evening's meeting via letter, and they also had a cost estimate within that letter. If sidewalks were improved, they would know what their costs would be. Knowing that 17 locations is a lot to cover, I'm going to attempt to give a brief summary of each location, and then of course, we'll go over any questions or details after that. I try to be very consistent with the recommendations, and generally, I recommend a new sidewalk if there was already sidewalk partially installed on a block. And so we would basically just be finishing off the route on a particular block. Also, if it was feasible without excessive relocation of utility poles and hydrants. If a retaining wall higher than 12 inches is going to be needed to put sidewalk in, I recommend against those, just knowing that historically, maintaining those walls is kind of a nightmare for the city. They fall over pretty easily, and the ones where I'm recommending an exemption, we'd be talking about four or five-foot-high walls at a minimum. Several of the recommended locations here do have trees that would need to be removed in order to install sidewalks, and I'll note those as I go through. And so there's conflicting goals here, right? We want a walkable city, but we also want a very good tree canopy in our city. So thankfully, I don't have to make that decision with you, but I, as I mentioned, I'm kind of coming at this from the walkable city perspective. So starting with location number one, this is North Washington between Houstonia and Walnut. This is a street that has sidewalk on the east side of the road, there's partial sidewalk on the west side. Staff is recommending installation along the west side here to complete the sidewalk route, because as you can see on the map, there's a little gap there where sidewalk already exists in the middle of the block. In order to do this, however, we would need to remove a 39-inch tree that's located at the north end adjacent to 303 West Houstonia. We are able to work around the other trees that are on that block. So this is one of those situations where we're trees versus walkability. Location number two is Marywood Drive between Houstonia and La Plaza. This is a street with sidewalk on the west side and no sidewalk on the east side. Here, the photos really don't do it justice, as it's extremely steep, we would have to have a very high retaining wall here in order to get compliant sidewalk installed, and so staff is recommending an exemption for location number two. Location three is Mary Avenue. This is between Marywood and Lafayette. We have sidewalk on the north side, but not on the south. We would need to remove an 18-inch diameter tree and then jog the sidewalk around an existing utility pole in order to install sidewalks at this location. This block was exempted back in 2015. The next block over to the east did have sidewalks installed back in 2015. And for this location, we are recommending installation, but again, there is that tree removal here. Location number four is Marywood Drive between Vincetta and Webster. This is a street that has sidewalk on the east side of the street, no sidewalk on the west side. And this is another one with an extremely steep slope, and a very tall retaining wall would be needed, so we're recommending against installation at that location. Location number five, I know we had a lot of people come to public comment for this one. It is one of the longer runs of sidewalk that's proposed for installation. Sidewalk is installed on the north side of the block, not on the south side, and the south side where sidewalk is currently not installed, those are all the rear yard properties of Vincetta. So the existing sidewalk along Webster kind of stops when the front yards stop on Webster there. This does dead-end at Murray Park, so the idea that this would be leading to a city facility is warranted here. There is already sidewalk installed adjacent to two of those properties, because our city policy is anytime you redevelop a home, you must install a new sidewalk along the frontages. And so over the, you know, since 2015 anyways, two of those properties went through that process and installed it. So now we have kind of an incomplete sidewalk network along that block. Installing the remaining sidewalk would require clearing of a lot of the brush and the scrub trees, you know, something smaller than 6-inch diameter, so it would take a lot of that greenery away. And then there's also two larger diameter trees, two 18-inch diameter trees, and one 10-inch diameter tree that would also need to be removed. So this one is certainly, I think, a difficult decision, or maybe you don't think it's difficult at all, but we did kind of struggle with this internally, whether to recommend for or against this one. Location six, this is West Houstonia between Vincetta and McDonald. We have sidewalk on the north side there, but not on the south side. This block does lead directly to the school crosswalks for Northwood Elementary, so that's one of the primary reasons we're recommending for installation here. We would need to cut back a lot of the shrub overgrowth that exists adjacent to 1946 Vincetta, but all the stumps for that, those shrubs are all on private property, so we really would just be cutting off the overgrowth. This block was exempted back in 2015, but we are recommending sidewalk this year, just as because it's such a primary pathway to the school. Location number seven is kind of a triangular island in the middle of the neighborhood that's bordered by Lloyd and Murdoch. This is simply a one, single-family home on a triangular parcel within the neighborhood. And looking at the aerial imagery for that spot, it really doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have sidewalks along the island, as there's really no good place to connect crosswalks there. And all the existing sidewalks around it get you to any of the destination points in the neighborhood. The parcel does have sidewalks along its Vincetta frontage that lead to its front door. Additionally, there's, we'd have to remove at least 10 trees and one utility pole in order to install sidewalk here. And so staff is recommending an exemption for number seven. Location number eight is next to the railroad tracks on Bonneview Drive. This is an area that runs along the east side of Bonneview, next to the railroad right-of-way, and would connect to the existing sidewalks that terminate kind of at each end of that jog. There's an existing sidewalk along the west side of Bonneview, and there currently are crosswalks that allow you to cross the road and continue the route through the neighborhood. So there is a walkable pathway, it's just not on both sides of the road. The area here is open, it's flat, it's actually pretty simple to input sidewalks there. Most of the cost to put them in would be covered by the city, because we are adjacent to the railroad right-of-way, so the city's cost for this would be about $39,000. And then there is one residential property at the south end that has a little bit of frontage to be installed, and they would be billed for 20 flags of sidewalk if approved. Location number nine, this is Oliver Road, north of Northwood Boulevard. This one's kind of a mixed bag. Oliver is a dead-end gravel street, it has three residential properties on it. Currently, there's no sidewalk on the east side of the road, and there's only one property on the east side of the road. And that property already has sidewalk along its frontage, which is on Northwood Boulevard. So there really isn't a reason to put a sidewalk, and I think the gentleman was here speaking on that. It doesn't lead you to anything, so I'm recommending an exemption on the east side. The west side of the road has two properties. Currently, there's public sidewalk that gives access to that first property, north of Northwood, but then that sidewalk does not continue to the second property. So just being consistent with the goal of completing partially-installed sidewalk networks, we are recommending installation there, but again, this really just leads you to one property, so. Location number 10, this is the south side of Carmen, east of Linwood. This is a section of Carmen that has sidewalk on the north side, and it is installed halfway on the south side of that block. So it's really just adjacent to one parcel where we don't have the sidewalk. We are recommending installation here to complete the sidewalk network, but doing so would require removal of a very mature 32-inch Norway spruce tree from the public right-of-way. So we are recommending installation there, but that's one of those tree walkability issues. Location number 11, which is just further down the road on Carmen, between Benjamin and Claussen, we are recommending an exemption for this location. We have sidewalks on the north side, but none on the south. And this is just another of those blocks where the grade is extremely steep, so putting a retaining wall would be necessary, and so we're recommending an exemption here. Location 12 is very simple, this is Sagamore, east of Woodward. This currently only has a 27-foot-wide right-of-way, a lot of that land was dedicated to either property in the past, so it's all taken up with roadway right now, there is nowhere to really put a sidewalk. We really just keep it on the list to make sure things don't change each time this cycle comes around, so that one is a pretty clear exemption. Location 13, this is the south side of Glenwood, between Claussen and Linwood, so this is right by Adams Elementary. It's a two-block section of Glenwood that runs along the north side of the school district property in front of Adams Elementary, and currently has sidewalk on Glenwood on the north side of the road, but none on the south side there. There are crosswalks that get you, if you're trying to access the school, to the side streets of Claussen or Linwood to access the front of the school building. Installing sidewalk is feasible on the first block, the western block between Claussen and Elmhurst, but it would be very difficult to get any sidewalks in on the eastern block between Elmhurst and Linwood, and there's just very steep slopes on that block. Also, there's a new fence that the school installed along the Glenwood property line, so even if we had sidewalks on that side of the road, it's not like you would be accessing a gate or getting yourself onto school property easier. You would still have to walk down the two side streets of Claussen or Linwood to get onto the school property. So for this reason, we are recommending an exemption for location 13. The next two locations, 14 and 15, are along the railroad right-of-way, kind of on either side from Maplewood. So location 14, this is Maplewood, just south of Glenwood, does run along the railroad right-of-way, there's currently sidewalk access to get you to all of the residential properties along there, and crosswalks that allow you to cross over the street to the west side and continue the pathway through the neighborhood. In order to put sidewalks here, we would have to remove three large diameter trees, relocate guy wires, and put them on railroad property, which is very difficult to get approved. And we'd also have to remove or relocate an existing streetlights. So because of all these number of obstructions, we're recommending an exemption for location 14. Location 15 is just on the other side of the railroad there. Installing a sidewalk there is not feasible again, because we have very steep grades, particularly where the road kind of curves from Maplewood into Glenwood. Additionally, there'd be four trees that would have to be removed here, and a lot of the scrub brush as well. Unlike the other locations reviewed by the railroads, there's no access crossings that gets you across the road to continue through the neighborhood. So staff is recommending exempting the full sidewalk installation at this location, but we do recommend installing a couple of sidewalk ramps at each end, just to provide that accessibility for residents to continue through the neighborhood. This would require two flags of sidewalk to be installed at the northernmost property on the west side, just to continue the sidewalk a little bit further so we can put a new ramp in. And then the city covers the cost of sidewalk ramps anytime we install them, and same goes for maintenance, because I know that question came up. So we would take care of maintaining or replacing those as their service life comes to end in the future. If approved, the city's portion of that would be just under $5,800. So this is listed as alternative 15A in the cost table, just if you're confused as to why there's a 15 and a 15A. Okay, almost there. Location 16 is- Location 16 is the north side of Ellen Avenue, between Main and the Western Bend in the road. This is another area where the frontage along the north side of Ellen is actually the rear yard property for Royal Avenue addresses, and we already have sidewalk along the south side of the road. Installing sidewalk here would be exceptionally difficult. We would have to remove 10 trees, relocate five hydrants, relocate eight utility poles, and also remove or relocate the existing guardrail that's at the west end of the block. So with all those constraints, we are not recommending installing sidewalk at this location. The final item for consideration is Vincetta crosswalks. So similar to last year, we reviewed to see if crosswalks could or should be installed across the median of Vincetta Boulevard, just to allow for safer and accessible crossing of the roadway, instead of just walking out into the road itself. This section of Vincetta within this year's program is between 12 Mile to where it curves up and meets Main Street. Currently, there's crosswalks wherever there is a through intersection on Vincetta, so that's at Lloyd and Marywood. And then we also have crosswalks through the median at West Houstonia, presumably because that's right by Northwood Elementary. So really, the only locations that we looked at for potential installation of crosswalks are where we have streets that tee into Vincetta but don't continue through. So there's five potential locations, they're listed on the map here as 17A through 17E, and we're recommending installation at two of these five locations. The first recommendation is at Laron Drive, this is kind of at the south end, closer to 12 Mile. Being that it is the closest intersection to 12 Mile, if somebody's kind of coming or going from that area of the city, it gives them, gets them across the road and then continue to the north if they wish. And then the other recommended location is at Murray. This is a juncture between the three streets of Vincetta, Murray, and Pinehurst. And so again, it kind of gives a little bit better accessibility getting through the neighborhood and trying to cross the road. With those two locations in mind, I'm recommending that we skip the potential crosswalks that could be installed at three other locations, that would be at Magnolia, Beechwood, and Washington. And the reason being that they're quite close to other existing crosswalks, either at Main Street, at Crooks, or the recommended ones that are at Murray there. So if installed, those crosswalks would all be considered ramps, they'd be funded by the city, and the two locations recommended equates to $23,000 for the city. And that summarizes all the locations.
All right. So we have a couple different options here, because we can obviously go through each one of these one by one, and that dialogue will take some magnitude higher of what our city engineer just went through. We can summary accept, you know, the recommendations by the engineering department. We can break it up into pieces where we accept the ones that, you know, staff says don't install, and then focus on the ones where they say install and kind of break it down and do a smaller piece. So I'll leave it to you guys to figure out how you want to do it, but I just wanted to put that out there. Historically, we've taken those approaches before we ask questions, so Commissioner Collo.
Okay, I'll try to make this a little easy, I think maybe we could start, I like your idea of rejecting the ones that staff recommends we do not do.
Wait a minute. There's a double negative in there.
Accept, yeah, yep. Accepting the recommendation to not proceed with sidewalk installation at 2, 4, 7, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, B, D, E. So those are all the ones that staff recommends we do not proceed with.
You had 15, but there was ramps in 15.
There's a 15A that I left off that list, so am I saying this correct?
Or 15?
Technically, it's location 15, so I would suggest we maybe set that one aside.
Strike 15 from that list on.
Okay. All right, and that's a motion?
That's a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Collo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. All right, discussion? All makes sense to me, staff's recommendation on those. All right, I'll call for the vote, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that leaves us with 1, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 15, 17, A, and C. All right, who wants to open one up? Commissioner Hunt.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, for your presentation. I just kind of have a general question, because there are a number of properties or sidewalks where it was recommended to put in sidewalks where the sidewalk will kind of cut over a driveway, and if a person drives in or parks in their driveway, they're going to be parking across the sidewalk, which we know is not allowed in the city of Royal Oak, and kind of cuts down on that walkability, because someone has to try and maneuver around, especially if they're, and have a mobility device, or they need visual aids, they're not able to see the car that's parked across. So what is the rationale behind that, and why is that still recommended?
Well, I guess it's sort of conflicting goals again, of are you trying to help the one resident or the neighborhood as a whole? I'm not sure, and I might look to the police chief here if, I know it's illegal to block the sidewalk, I'm not sure if it's also legal to park within the right-of-way perpendicular like that. Just the sidewalk, so never mind. But frankly, we really didn't look at that as a reason to move forward or not move forward with sidewalk, but that's certainly a consequence to those neighbors where they either have to pull into their garage, or they have to park on the street if sidewalks were there.
Okay.
All right, that's my for now, thank you.
Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, so I guess I'll kick it off with number one, and recommend denying staff recommendation for property number one.
Okay, that's a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, is there a support, or a second, sorry, Commissioner Douglas, seconds? Yeah. Discussion? Commissioner Douglas.
Yes, this is my third round of new sidewalks, yours as well, Mayor, and every time we've looked at this enormous tree, we've gone, no, 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 can't get rid of that. So, and it just keeps getting bigger, actually, and here we are, again protecting it.
Yeah, I'll add to that, it's a sugar maple, not a silver maple. Silver maples have been historically problematic in the city of Royal Oak. That was the cheap builder's great cheer, a tree they put up 70 years ago. They rot from the inside, and then people wake up one day with a messed-up house, or a messed-up car, or God forbid somebody gets hurt. But as long as the tree is healthy and is as beautiful as that maple, I side with that recommendation as well. Anybody else? Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Ms. Fair. I just want, as we're early on, as I want to thank Ms. Donahue also, I mean, this is not easy to come up with this list every year. And I know that this is hard work on staff, and you are juggling those conflicting responsibilities to both an individual homeowner and then the city as a whole. And objectives have been set for walkability or SCAP. We have a lot of competing priorities here, so I know this is hard. Thank you for putting this list together.
Sure, thank you.
And I would say, you know, it's trade-offs, right? And all you can do is present the trade-offs, make a recommendation based on engineering standards, and the direction we've given you to make the city more walkable. So please, nobody make city engineer Donahue enemy number one, she's doing her technical part of the job, because if she doesn't do it, then nobody does it, then, you know, we don't have the ability to look at the other criteria. And so we have to, yeah, it would be nice, it would make things a little bit more walkable, but it's our decision up here to say, is that worth, in this case, tearing down a tree for the benefit you might get, and at least for the three that you've heard from, not so much? Okay, so any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. You want to go in order? Okay, anyone want to bring a motion up with number three? Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, we've heard from the homeowner here who's affected by this, some hardship in that family right now, and we do have the issue of, you know, the, taking away their inability to park in their driveway. Now, one might say they do have a garage that they could park in, but nevertheless, this would be one, it's such a short block, without really going in many places, I would vote to, against the staff recommendation, recommendation, and vote to not place a sidewalk there.
Okay, we can construe that in the form of a motion.
As a motion, yeah.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt. Discussion. Commissioner Collo.
You know, while I will vote in favor of this motion tonight, I don't think that just necessarily not being able to park across the driveway is a hardship in itself. I live on a street that is mostly a side street for other streets, where there are many cars up and down that cannot park because they have a side, you know, a parking garage on that side block. That's just part of buying a house on the side with a garage that faces the side street. So you do have the ability to park in the garage, you have the ability to park on the street, but I'm in favor of this, I just, I don't think that's a precedent setting characteristic tonight.
Yeah, I'll just add that, I mean, in general, yeah, but I think that this has been, like, since the homes were built, you know what I mean? And I think that unless you can prove that you're really, really making a strong connection between neighborhoods and that the sidewalk is, yeah, exactly, if a new school, like, you know, if it was really critical, then it might be a different way of making that decision, but given the fact that, you know, the demand for the sidewalk, given the burden to the direct neighbors, I don't see that trade-off as being fair, so I will be supporting the motion. Okay, anybody else? Call for the vote, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, second at five. Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Ms. Fair. I think we heard a little bit about this one tonight, so I'd definitely be in favor of not adding a sidewalk. However, I would ask Ms. Donahue, could we add a ramp or crosswalks that people, because I've noticed on, if you're walking north to get to Upster, there is no way to turn left to get to the park from the top. So I would look to see if we can add an ADA ramp at that intersection.
Yes, we could look at putting a ramp at Marywood and Webster, which is still, you know, a little bit of ways from where the sidewalk is currently not existing, but that does give you an access point. We did not notify either of those residents that this was on the agenda, so they, they may be getting a ramp adjacent to their property that they weren't expecting, but that's certainly your call to make.
Maybe we make it as a recommendation to go back and take a look at it versus making that call tonight.
Yes. So I'm making a motion to deny with a request to bring this back to us at a future meeting for consideration of adding a ramp.
For only the ramp part, but the rest of it, so we can give closure to the residents impacted by it.
No sidewalk.
The only thing that'd be possible is a potential ramp at an existing sidewalk. Okay. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cheesem. Discussion. Commissioner Cheesem.
Yeah, I just want to say that I did drive by all these spots and visit all of them, and I think that this is a really remarkable section of the city with just, just the, you just feel like you're in the woods. And so I feel like that it is obviously habitat for a lot of animals, and it's, I think it is important to preserve it, so I will be supporting the motion to reject the, I will support the motion.
Commissioner Collo? Yeah, I'll just say that the stories about the owls, that was a real hoot. All right, I'm only allowed two dad jokes tonight, I've already exercised one of them on this, so. Yeah, no, I'll say that I'm very familiar with Bicycle Hill, and I've been up there several times, and, I mean, it, where I understand, where city engineering has a technical recommendation based on technical matters, I think this one is a no-brainer, that we should not put sidewalks there. It's not going to bring any meaningful benefit to the neighborhood or to the people that would be in the area, and it would only, the cost of stripping the character away and the habitat away and the trees away just seems to me to far exceed any walkable benefit we may get, so. All right. Commissioner Herzog.
I just have one question. So going into the park on Webster, it looks like there's like a ledge, is that something that comes through engineering to make that more compliant, getting into the park? Or is that parks?
I think it would be kind of a mix, because part of it would be right-of-way, and part of it would be a park improvement, and hopefully parks funding to do it.
Parks is a hairy shake, but it all to them.
Just a question?
That was just my question, yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll call for the vote, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to six. Commissioner Cheesem.
So I think I'm going to break the pattern with sex here. So I have a daughter who goes to Northwood Elementary School, and I, while I have compassion for the homeowner, who I think spoke during public comments, with parents dropping off and picking up their kids at those times of days, you have, you know, kids and parents walking into the street because they're parking along Houstonian, they're parking on Vincetta, and so there's a lot of just walking to, to get to the cars. And so I'm under the impression, I believe that this, this will actually improve safety for my daughter, her classmates, and their families. So I'm going to move to support this recommendation from the staff.
A motion by Commissioner Cheesem, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. Discussion. Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, this was a yes for me also, and again, this is a site we've looked at, this will be the third time that, as a commissioner, I've considered this, and I don't know why we never went through with it, but the presence of that school at the end of this street is just an overwhelming, makes the overwhelming case to install the sidewalk here.
Yeah, I was on the fence about it, but when you do look at the map and understanding the drop-off and under, I mean, I mean, my kids don't go to Northwood, they go to Keller and Rahm's, which is a whole different situation in high school, I guess, but she drives herself now, so. You know, and I think about how you have to, especially during pickup and drop-off, when you have all those cars there, yes, you could make the argument, go to the other side of the street and go through the crosswalk and all of that, but, you know, moving 50% of the kids that are using that across the street, you know, might be challenging from a safety point of view and from a traffic flow point of view, waiting for those kids to cross, versus just out of the school if they're directed on the right path of the sidewalk that they need, I guess is a convincing argument to me, so. Any other discussion? Are you going to call for the vote, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Brings to number eight. Commissioner Collo.
Well, since Commissioner Cheesem started the trend, I will also move recommendation of number eight, as it connects existing paths and the city pays the freight of this.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. I'm going to be a no on this one. I realize that it's not an impact to the residential pocketbooks directly, but still to the overall residents, there's an impact here from the, from the road millage, and, you know, I guess that stretch going along there, you know, I do see it's expensive, it goes right along the railroad. You know, might be one of those cases where it's best just to cross if you have to go south or north. North, you're fine, if you're coming from the north to the south, you have to cross, and then, you know, a bulk of everybody is in the neighborhood here, because you're just hugging that railroad track. So I understand if people disagree with me, that's fine. I just think for me, when I weigh it, you know, where we could use that $39,000 to build ramps and do other stuff, I feel that funding could be used, that fits me. Any other discussion? All right, all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. No, two no's. All right, welcome to the no club. All right. Number nine. Oliver. Okay, Commissioner Douglas.
Again, third time around, this is a dead-end street, weird kind of little dead-end street with a tiny little sidewalk. I don't see us serving the greater good in terms of traffic patterns cutting through, so I am going to move that we override staff's recommendation and not require a sidewalk installation at number nine.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. Discussion. Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Ms. Fair. Ms. Donahue, can you explain to me where the, I'll lead off by saying I'm for the motion, I will vote to not install the sidewalks here. I'm just wondering where the notion comes that we install sidewalks with new builds, because we see this here where there's a partial sidewalk network, and then we saw it with, on Webster Road too, where some new houses came in and they had to build, but they go to nowhere right now.
So those are part of our state plan review design standards, so anytime somebody comes in for a permit, that's one of the requirements that we check for that. It hasn't been part of city policy forever, in fact, I think it was relatively new when I started here about 10 years ago. So there is probably a lot of houses that built, you know, decades ago and weren't forced to put sidewalks in at that time. If this house was torn down and rebuilt, we would tell them to put sidewalks in, but...
Okay, so I guess this is a question then for Mr. Fan, like, or is this, if we want to explore, I'm sorry, explore this policy? to re-explore, I'm sorry, explore this policy again, what would be the most appropriate way to do it?
I think, one, you know, we can take that recommendation of the city engineer and, you know, provide with the city commission's, you know, full support, or at least the majority, that this is a differentiation in policy that you're in support of. You know, you're in support of it, I don't know if the rest of the table is as well.
Because I guess this might be a discussion we have and come back with another time, but maybe we need to look at, why are we continuing to require people to spot build sidewalks in areas where we're not going to eventually install new sidewalk? That neighbor up on Webster who had to install one and, you know, hopefully we're not going to sell a sidewalk for a time soon, why not just have them face that cost burden when we decide to do the whole block in the future?
I think maybe I can answer that a little bit. I think that the thought is, is that some of us, like Commissioner Douglas and I, have been up here for a while, and we kind of feel like we've gone through the city three times, there's going to be something really significant for us to back off and change our decision on where, like, here is a perfect example, like, I don't see why we would change our decisions from 2015 or the times we did it before. But if a new commission were to get elected, they may see things differently, and they may want to use that opportunity, if they're already tearing up everything, to have that homeowner through the, in their mortgage and through everything, the cost of the development, to put that sidewalk in as a bank. If a new commission were to come on board and decide that they wanted to put a sidewalk in an area that formerly hadn't had a sidewalk. I think where the interesting question is, where we have some of those properties where staff is recommending no, because of utility movements and placements and all of that, would we still require those places to have? And if we're, if that's a clear, like, any place where staff has historically recommended no, you know, you know, should we do that? Because it's awkward. So I think it merits a conversation, I don't know about, given everything we have going on right now. But I think maybe if the city engineer can take a note, and when we talk a little bit about strategic planning or the next sidewalk program, ahead of the next sidewalk program, we can make a few policy decisions, probably next year, that would probably be the best place to do it, my recommendation. Because this is all, this is done for this year when we get through this, and then I would say, ahead of the next one, we can get ahead of it. Commissioner Douglas?
Well, I'll point out, there are darn few sites in this city where somebody is building a house on an empty lot, a vacant lot in the middle of a block which doesn't have sidewalks. And we do want, when people are, you know, doing infill housing or, you know, doing a tear-down and building a new house, we do want to be requiring them to install sidewalks. So changing the ordinance just to say, you know, well, to figure out the nuances of what constitutes a house on a street that doesn't need a sidewalk, might be spending a lot of time on an ordinance without great results.
But we might also create the pre-order to say, tear down these beautiful trees in the front right-of-way or yard, to put the sidewalk in and not even know, because it wouldn't even come to us. And knowing that, like, in some of these cases, we would never put a sidewalk in, ever be recommended by the city, so maybe there's a little, I agree with what you're saying, but probably maybe a little bit of finesse and direction for staff to say, okay, you know, if it meets this criteria, then we have the authority to say yes or no, if it meets this criteria, then, you know, you have to put one in.
Doubles in the details?
It is. That's why I say we give them some time and wait till the next program, because these ones are already in front of us and settled. Okay, so we have a no on Oliver Road, that's the motion. All right, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, does that bring us to 10? Commissioner Collo.
I'm a sidewalk guy tonight.
You are?
I'm not going to make that sweet young lady walk up here again and tell us why we shouldn't have the sidewalks, so I'm going to make a motion to deny staff recommendation not put sidewalks in at number 10.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt. Discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, just looking at this street, and the fact that this block is, has half a sidewalk, and that it is a through street, I mean, it's a continued to a street, I'm, I'm going to, I will not support the motion. I do think we need to have sidewalk there, and I'll just say anecdotally, I was out for a walk today in an unfamiliar area, and I'm walking up a street and there's, I'm on a sidewalk and suddenly there's, and I want to go up to the end of the block and turn right, and suddenly there's no sidewalk in front of me, and I have to cross the street or walk in the street to go up to the, to be able to turn right, so I'm like sensitive, like, been sensitized to this sort of thing, and this is exactly one of those cases.
Anybody else? Commissioner Hunt?
Well, I'll just say, I'm still a bit troubled that someone would have to park across the sidewalk in order to park their vehicle in front of their garage, especially since they purchased a home without there being a sidewalk there, knowing that it's, you know, sort of a short sidewalk. And also the tree. The historical tree there that I would not want to see torn down, so that's why I will support the motion.
I agree with Commissioner Hunt. All right. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right, motion passes. All right, that brings us to 15, and there's two parts to 15. Oh, Commissioner Collo.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move recommendation 15A, not installing the sidewalk, but installing the ramps.
But installing the ramps?
Yes. No sidewalk, but add ramps.
Okay, is there a second? Second by, no? Is there a second? Okay, the motion is going to fail if there's no second?
I'm sorry, I have not followed this, where is 15A?
Well, it's really, it's, it's, it's broken up into two parts. One is the recommendation not to put the full sidewalk in, but ramps, so maybe that's what we're saying AMB, it's not necessarily, it's 15, but there's two decision factors within 15. So... Now that Commissioner Collo's motion has been clarified, is there a second?
And your motion is for ramps, not sidewalk?
Ramps, not sidewalks.
And that's to follow the recommendation?
Yeah, basically it's to follow the recommendation. Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Hunt. All right, discussion? All right, with no, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, and that brings us to the 17, and this is all on, we have two recommendations out of the five to put crosswalks in, and, yeah, this is not impacting property owners, so to speak, other than their ability to walk the neighborhood, it's all on public land. Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to follow staff recommendations for item number 17.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Collo to move forward with staff recommendations on 17, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt. Discussion? Commissioner Collo?
You know, so we did this last year on the other side of Vincetta, and we've seen these to be wildly popular in the neighborhood, people have enjoyed walking across the street, the ease of access, so these seem to be an easy upgrade, and then once again, the city's paying for it.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. We got through your sidewalks, folks. So hopefully you got a better understanding of the process. We aim to please. But yeah, unfortunately, probably in six years, we'll, we might be back here again, just, that's the way the process works, I know it seems annoying, but we have to cycle through, it's good discipline in our engineering department, it's good discipline as a city to always check in and make sure that nothing's changed, and, you know, it's, it's the way we have to do it, so appreciate you coming out tonight, thank you for illustrating a little bit more about your neighborhood so we could make more informed decisions, and welcome to stay the rest of the meeting. But if you want to leave now, now would be a good time, and then we'll get to item 10, that way we can have a kind of transition here, because I know there's a lot of people here for sidewalks.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor? Do you think perhaps we can take a five-minute recess, let the room clear, and reset after three hours of the meeting here?
Yeah, we can, actually, we're going to take, guys, we're just going to take a five-minute recess here. You're welcome. Does that mean since you asked for it, you get first dibs on the offer?
I'm going to table. How's your?
It's getting bad, you feel that this morning?
So, it's getting better this morning.
And it's been down. It's a fun. It's left out. That's like, why? Really, the dog was there. And I asked, how did she not notice? It's like, I didn't bring a bill. Nice answer. You know, some stupid. It all has some jury.
I know. It was like, this must be the only thing. Touch.
Hey, Joseph.
Yeah, I'm scared what he can't. I don't see that there was any. It's like, right? 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 It's like, right?
Alrighty, everyone. We're going to call the meeting back to order. If everyone can, I mean, you don't have to go back to the seat or not. But just, we're going to start. So, I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. So, I'm going to bring the meeting back to order. So, that brings us to item 10 on tonight's agenda, which is consideration of ordinance to rezone 4704 Rochester Road to planned unit development. First reading, Mr. Twing. Seems like you've gotten a lot smarter and younger. Now, we'll hand this over to Mr. Murphy.
You have in front of you a request tonight to rezone the property from mixed-use-two to planned unit development. It's a 1.2-acre site on Rochester Road, just south of 14 Mile Road. It's approved with a vacant one-story financial institution that had a drive-through. That's probably been vacant for about a decade. Petitioners proposing an L-shaped building, a multiple-family apartment building. The leg along Rochester Road is three and a half stories in height. For a height of 40 and a half feet, the leg along Genesee is three stories in height and is 36 feet, three stories and 36 feet in height. The maximum allowable height in the mixed-use-two zoning district is 36 feet. The building itself is 89.3 feet from the nearest single, adjacent, single-family property on Genesee. The current zoning allows for the development of 16 units, and the petitioner is proposing 42 units. Thirty-five of those units would be one-bedroom, and seven of the units would be two-bedroom units. There's a parking lot behind the building that's accessed off of Genesee, as well as the adjacent L-shaped public alley. And you can see, if you've been there or on the aerial photographs, that the alley does contain public parking. It's an interesting shape right of way that accommodates not only for traditional, in a traditional alley sense, but it also accommodates surface parking. Zoning ordinance requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit. So, at 42 units, it would require 84 parking spaces per the ordinance. But through the planned unit development process, the petitioner is proposing 66 parking spaces, or 1.57 spaces per unit. The planning commission's approval motion required no more than 65 parking spaces. The site plan that's provided in front of you tonight provides for 66. The planning commission's motion also eliminated parking from the, along the eastern property line, and required that area to be landscaped. The drawing that you have in front of you is slightly different than their approval. It does provide a landscaping buffer between the development and the adjacent, single-family home on Genesee, but it also provides for 12 parking spaces. The planning commission also required in their approval a modification to the driveway along Genesee, so that it directs traffic exiting the site to go westward on Genesee towards Rochester Road. And therefore, it would be a design that would physically prohibit people from turning left and heading eastward on Genesee into that single-family neighborhood. In addition to the deviations that are referenced, the petitioner is seeking a waiver from the identifiable and accessible entrances that face a roadway facing Genesee, facing Rochester Road. Other seeking variations in the building massing, the number of trees in the landscaped island within the parking lot, the screening for the parking lot from the public view on Genesee, as well as allowing for 20-foot-tall light fixtures in the parking lot versus the ordinance's maximum of 15 feet. Petitioner did provide you with a letter with regard to your community benefits ordinance, and addressing what they believe are benefits, which includes reserving three units for a period of 10 years for what they refer to as attainable housing. That's not identified in terms of annual household income in comparison to the average median income of the metro area. So, I think that's a good conversation to have with them. In your recent planned unit development approvals, that threshold has been set at 80%, a household with 80% of the area median income. Many projects oftentimes go as high as 120% of area median income to meet that attainability standard, or even 150% of area median income. It's entirely up to you with your conversation with the petitioner as to what term you agree upon. And with that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Murphy. Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I'm sorry, can you describe the parking situation on the green belt and how it deviates from the planning commission's recommendation? One more time for us.
Certainly. I'm going to zoom in on the drawing. I think that'll be a benefit. The original drawing that was reviewed by the planning commission highlighted parking spaces along the eastern, adjacent to the eastern property line, where there's a single-family home, adjacent, single-family home on Genesee. There was a row parking the entire length that went all the way to the property line closest to the sidewalk on Genesee. And the planning commission's approval motion was to not have any parking in that location, that it would all be a green belt with a masonry wall and additional landscaping. The petitioner has provided you something different from what the planning commission's recommendation is. They're proposing 12 parking spaces in that area where the planning commission agreed to having no parking whatsoever.
And I know that you said that there are 66 spaces in this plan where the planning commission said no more than 65. That's only one extra space. We have 12 spaces here. Do you know where those came from? Or is this a reconfiguration? Or they had 12 less spaces in the last plan?
No, they had more parking spaces in the plan that went to, the version of the drawing that went to the planning commission. The planning commission did have a conversation with the petitioner, and the motion was put on the table to essentially allow for fewer parking spaces per unit. The petitioner was asked by some planning commission members as to their market that they were trying to reach, and what they believed would be the ratio, an appropriate ratio for them, based on their historic knowledge of owning hundreds, if not thousands, of apartment units and managing them over several decades. And so, the petitioner has, and they can reiterate again tonight, what they believe, based on their market condition of this particular product, the number of parking spaces that they need, and why they're showing 12 parking spaces in an area where the planning commission told them not to have any.
Okay. I guess my division just comes from, the plan was approved with 65 spaces before. Where were these spaces previously?
It wasn't an approval that highlighted 65 parking spaces as much as it was a motion that stated that there could be no more than 65 parking spaces.
Right. And the way they got that is, in the original plan, they had more than 65, and they had them all along that eastern front. And then what they did is they put, you see in the southern-eastern front there where those two trees are, they filled those in, and they filled over on the top, I think, too. And that's how they got to, and they just left those remaining there. So, that's how they got to 66.
So, they filled in where the dwellings are and left where the yardage would be?
Yeah, they just, they green-spaced it, I think. But the petitioner will explain a little better. But what we saw before was that, then we said, or the planning commission made a recommendation to say 65, and so it looks like they just filled it in, those spots. But not all of them. Any other questions for staff? Petitioner's here tonight. You prepared to make a presentation this evening?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, welcome the petitioner up to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city commissioners. First of all, we appreciate your patience in waiting for us this evening. I know it's been a long evening already. We'll try and be as concise and precise in our presentation and our answers to your questions. I'm Dennis Cowan. I'm with Plunkett Cooney. I am representing Trowbridge Home Construction. And with me this evening is our team. First of all, Tony Randazzo, who is the founder and one of the principals of the company, along with his son. Also, Jason Krieger of Krieger Klatt is the Architect of Record, and Jacob Swanson from the Fleece Vanderbrink Company, which did our parking study. So, we have everybody here to answer your questions. First, I want to say that Trowbridge is very excited about this project. It's the opportunity to breathe life into a vacant and abandoned property. And nothing is worse for property values, commercial or residential, than blighted or abandoned property. This plan is consistent in what we're presenting this evening with the master plan, but more importantly, the actual development of what has happened along Rochester Road. Much of Rochester Road between 13 and 14 Mile is multifamily facilities. Some were built, you know, decades ago, some were built most recently. But we believe we've met or exceed the PUD standards, and the planning commission agreed, and we were very heartened by their six-to-one recommendation to you to approve the request we are making for a PUD. We did meet with our neighbors on February 15th in the dead of winter, and it seems so long ago now after this beautiful day today, which, by the way, the Tigers won 6-5. We met with about 30 residents, and we did listen. We had a dialogue. Frankly, many of them were opposed to the project. Some thought it was okay, but we did have that dialogue, and that's important. Coming out of that, we did listen. We reduced the number of units from 48 to 42. We increased the number of parking spaces from 66 to 79. And I'll talk about that parking situation in a second. We moved the building, the L part, the lower part, 16 feet further, and we also added on the corner of Genesee and Rochester, a small park-like setting there, which will be green space and also, hopefully, public art. We do have a number of community benefits there in the letter, but just a couple highlights. We do have the three attainable housing units. And by the way, Mr. Murphy pointed out, and so there's no confusion, that's the 80% AMI, the language he had sent us that's been in some of your other, some of your other projects and PUD agreements. So, that's what we're committed to. There's EV chargers for four spaces, as I mentioned, the public art component. And since we've been talking so much about trees tonight, we're saving three very large legacy trees, which are on Genesee, which I know that is something that's important to the neighborhood and to us. I'm going to have Jason come up in a minute and go through the site plan, and I'll conclude. But I do want to mention one thing that I think is very important, and that is, we've heard a lot about speculation, quite frankly, about negative impact on the neighborhood. I want to give some facts, and they're not that far away. And I put it in our compliance sheet for the PUD standards. About a half-mile away, the Robertson Brothers built a multifamily project three stories high. It used to be the site of a church. I live right around the corner on Windermere. And it's very interesting. The southern border is Midland Avenue. And if you go down Midland Avenue, there's three brand-new houses on the northern side of the street. So, I went and looked up those three addresses in the city's BSNA system. All of them were built after this project was announced and under construction. Three brand-new houses. And they range in square footage from 2373 to 2572 in square footage. The assessed value is in excess of $300,000 of every property. Now, we all know what that means. Assessed value, you double it, and we're all a little behind. We're at record-high prices right now. These homes are probably worth between $640,000 and $700,000. And they pay an average of $11,000 in property taxes. So, I give that as an example, and more, and in particular, is one house, 517, is right behind the project. I mean, it is the first house behind the multifamily project. So, at least for three families, and I think all of us, the most important investment in our lives is your home, is the most significant investment you have. They said, we can live with this project. It's not destroying the neighborhood. We've seen it in its operation, and we're going to build a brand-new house here and invest in Royal Oak. So, I don't see that the concern and the fear that this is going to destroy the neighborhood is going to happen, because it has not happened less than half a mile away. And Midland's a great street, and a lot of people have invested and upgraded their homes. Maybe they haven't built new homes. And I think that's important to point out. So, at this time, I'm going to ask Jason to come up and walk us through the site plan, and then just a couple minutes' conclusion. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jason Krieger with Krieger Klatt Architects, 400 East Lincoln, Royal Oak, 4067. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Murphy. Please go back up to the site plan. I'm going to walk everybody through the architectural portion of the presentation. I know that Joseph went through and gave some great info. I think really just the idea is to give everybody an idea, the understanding of how the site operates and flows, and we can also talk about the look, feel, and materials. One thing I want to mention is that we've been, or our company's been working with the Randazzos since, I think, 2019, and we're working on several projects with them. One of them's being built right now. It's called the Hazelton, which is right down the street at Sixth and Troy. And we're finishing one up in Clausen at Main and Roth, so just north of Rochester Road, or Main Street. And the thing I want to point out here is that they hold their products for forever. It's legacy projects for them. So, when they're building, they're worried about and thinking about what the grandkids are going to inherit. So, what you see in their buildings is all brick, masonry, high-quality windows, and they want to make sure it's maintenance-free. And that's exactly how this project will be as well. So, on the screen, I'm thinking, good, you guys can see it. This right here is the proposed site plan. And as mentioned, along Rochester Road, which is on the bottom of the screen, Genesee's to the right, north is to the left, so 14 Mile is over to the left. The building's L-shaped. The design purposefully was pulled as far away from the single-family as possible and fronts Rochester Road. As mentioned, we had earlier design where the L shape that's heading east was closer to the single-family. Things were modified. So, we actually reduced the units, brought the building back in even farther. We want to make sure that we're not impacting the folks who live to the east with white sun, things of that nature. The one thing I want to definitely address is the green space that would be on the southeast corner. In the planning commission meeting, as mentioned, our parking went all the way down to the south. And the goal was to get as many parking spaces as possible, because in the neighborhood meeting, parking's a big concern. So, we wanted to maximize that. At the planning commission, the thought was to add more green space, number one. Number two, could you add the green space next to the house, so that we're even shielding that home even more from this development? And what could happen would be, if there is an issue, it can be land-banked. So, you could always capture that and turn those into parking spaces if there is a problem. Going down to the, I think it was 65, would be totally fine. Where that came from was a sweet spot for the developer is 1.5. That's the ratio that they want. Right now, we're at 1.57. And that seems to be the tried-and-true number for a parking ratio, is 1.5. If you're in the downtown, even lower. So, that's where that came from. So, that's something that we're willing to discuss. Another item is the right-turn-only out of the site that would head out to Rochester. There was a comment in the write-up about working on the ergonomics of it. Totally fine. Totally fine. Once we get a civil engineer on board and work with city staff, we can rework that any way they want. The intent is we'd have a right-turn-only onto Genesee. And then a change that occurred, which it's not clouded on this, I think it's clouded on the site plan, but it's fine. On the north side of the site, there's a dumpster right there that used to be on the east side. So in order to make, again, the word ergonomics work to get out to the public alley to the north, that flipped over to the other side. And then along the way, we added many more trees than what was originally proposed. Bushes, trees, things of that nature. We tried to max out as best we could. And also, as mentioned, we're saving the trees that are on Genesee. We created a pocket park that's on the southwest corner. The goal is to have some kind of public art in there. There's nothing defined yet. It's something that, it's a placeholder, but that is the goal, is to create something nice for the neighborhood. The circulation goes around the internal portion of the site there, you can see. So the goal is folks can go out to 14 Mile, or then it could then turn out onto Genesee if they're coming or going. The other benefit to this design is that the parking's completely hidden from Rochester. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, unlike a bank that would go in or retail where the parking's along Rochester Road, as you're driving by, holds a nice street line. So the parking's hidden. Could we go to, actually, where's the photometric? Could you go to, I think it might be up. We know that there are concerns about lighting. And part of this requirement for the submittal, keep going up, I think, is to provide a photometric plan. So we actually had our lighting engineers take the light fixtures that are proposed. And this is at the 20 feet. And we're okay going down to 15 feet. We just have to make sure that our foot candles are met, as far as distribution. But when you look at the property, it's zero. I think there's one spot where it's .1, which is in the backyard of the resident. But I believe this is per the ordinance. So the idea here is everything's downward, shielded, onsite, and will not bleed off to the neighborhood. And then if you could go to the next slide, please?
I'm sorry. Can you just explain the site a little bit more for us?
Yeah. Yeah, sure. Okay.
Not being lighting experts.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, okay. So this is a photometric plan, which means it's showing you the light level as it hits the ground. And right now, except for the one spot that I see, which would be in the northeast corner, it's, and right there along the north, which is facing the public alley, it's zero.
Well, I would also say that you've moved that dumpster location, so maybe you don't need as much light up there, so it could go to zero.
Exactly. Right. Yep. Correct.
Because you're lighting that dumpster. That's what it is.
That's right. Yeah. So that would be, I guess the takeaway here is that there would be zero foot candles around the perimeter. So if we can go to, so we also performed some sun studies. Again, just to take a look and see if this building would impact the neighbors at all. And these are at the summer and winter solstice, which is one of the sun's highest and lowest in the sky. And you can see the date and the times. So on the lower right side of our site represents the neighbor that's to the east. And so during the summertime, you know, the shadow, it's barely hitting the property line, which is good. And that's, part of that's because we actually took and lowered that portion of the building down to 36 feet at its tallest. And then in the winter, which is at 4, once you hit 5 o'clock, it's pretty much dark, December 21st. But the same thing, the shadows do go farther, but they're in the backyard in the wintertime. Maybe go to the plans really quick, Joseph, please? So these are just 3D isometrics of the site. We have renderings that show it better. Okay. I'll just walk you guys through the floor plans really quick. As mentioned, it's a stacked apartment building. So it's three and a half stories, three stories on the east leg. And it's a, well, it's three and a half because the top floor isn't a full floor. It's tucked in the roof. So what you're going to see is three floors from the street. The top portion of that top floor is in the roof, and there's dormers. So I'll show you that. There are external stairs, and then there's storage units beneath the stairs. So if we go up to the next floor. So this is the upper walkway. And again, in the renderings, you can see that. That's like pictures worth a thousand words. Next level up, please. So the purple is still the one bedrooms, and then the, I guess you could say, blue. Those are the two bedrooms. So that's where they have the lofts. And if you go to the next level up. So those are the lofts. I'm calling them lofts because it's another bedroom, but it's tucked in the roof line up above the floor below. And then we have some elevations. Again, it's an all-masonry building. We have metal railings, metal windows, shingled roof. So something that will be there and look good for a long time. There's no maintenance. Maybe if you just go to some of the renderings, Joseph. So those are the renderings from the street. So last thing I want to touch on is, in the write-up, there were a few items that I would call house cleaning, that we have no problem editing. I don't know if it has to get read into, if there is whatever motion there is, but total of 16 dwellings would be possible under the current zoning, not that 13 is listed on the table. That would be corrected. Petitioners deducting 18,000 square feet of light area for the first two dwellings instead of 9,000, that would be revised. And then updating the curb cut off of Genesee would be revised as well. So that would just be an item that we would work with the staff on, engineering and fire department and everything else. So that's it.
Thank you. Just a couple items. There's a whole list of the community benefits that is in my letter, so I won't read all those. If you have any questions about any of them, we'll go through it. On the parking. So we started, the first plan was 66 spaces. When we came back with the revised plan, it was 79. The Planning Commission felt that we only needed 65, and we could land-bank those additional spaces. And if the judgment of the Planning Commission, at a later date, we needed those spaces, we could open them up. So those spaces were taken along the eastern edge. What I remember the Plan Commission telling us is, when you take those spaces away on the eastern edge, please take them away right across from the residential home. And we agreed. We thought that was an excellent idea, and that's what we did. But we do need those remaining spaces to come up with the 66 or 65, however you feel about it. I think 66 is fine. So the other important thing about the site is, and was important to the city staff, is we eliminated the two curb cuts onto Rochester Road. Now, think about that. I know that there is a cut-through parking issue onto Genesee. Part of it may be because we've had all these entrances and exits. We've got a street, two curb cuts, and the alleyway. We're cutting four down to two. And I'm going to tell you why that makes things simpler. We're actually doing something about the traffic congestion. We're not going to make it worse. We're going to do something about it. When you cut those two curb cuts out and you open up the wall so you have the alleyway, you do a couple things. Our apartment users who want to go on the 14 Mile Road have no need whatsoever to go down Genesee. In fact, that's going to take a lot longer to go down and move up to 14. They're going to go right out the alleyway to 14 Mile. That's all they have to do. For those who want to go south on Rochester Road, either at the businesses or in the apartment complex, they now have a much easier option. Instead of going down the alleyway, they can go out to Genesee and turn south. They can see the traffic more easily, and it creates and lessens the congestions of people trying to make a southbound turn with the only option being the public alleyway. Now, they can come through our property, and that's fine with us. We understand that. Those who are using the commercial businesses or our residents get onto Genesee, and they can go south very easily. So we're cutting down on the congestion. We're giving more options, less reasons for people either at the parking area or the commercial businesses or our residents to even consider using Genesee, which we would discourage. And we want to have that coming out to be a right-turn-only onto Genesee. So those are some of the things that we've done. The use of the public alley was actually encouraged by the city staff in order to get rid of those two curb cuts, which I think is important. And now you'll see, you'll have less traffic congestion in that immediate area, more options, more access to 14 Mile Road. So I think those are all important features of the project. So with that, we believe that we meet the PUD standards. We believe we're bringing an excellent project that'll complement a beautiful neighborhood. You know, nobody wants to move next to a crummy neighborhood. I give all the credit in the world to the people on Genesee and all those other streets. People, we want to have an option. What Mr. Randazzo is motivated by is not greed, is not money. It's having an affordable place for people to live that's beautiful, that he would put in his family member, and the building is beautiful, I think everyone agrees on that, that isn't in downtown. That's where most of our construction right now is going on for multifamily. Instead, this is out more in a neighborhood area, and I think that's important. Younger people in particular, we had several come to the Planning Commission, are looking, and speak in favor of the project, are looking for options in housing. Not everybody wants to own a house. Not everybody can afford a house. Not everybody wants to pay the taxes. And here's a very nice option for them, right near a good area, 14 Mile and Rochester Road, an area that's accessible to transit on 14 Mile. And we think that this is the right project in the right place at the right time. So with that, I'm going to conclude. And any member of our team are willing to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for the petitioner. Mr. Hunt.
So this is a three and a half story building.
Correct. On the Rochester Road frontage.
So navigating the building, someone that may have mobility issues, is, are there going to be maybe like a service elevator or some lift?
No. What we'll have is the 14 units on the first floor are mobility accessible. So though people would have, who would have mobility challenges, we would rent them on the first floor. There are very few two- or three-story apartment buildings in Royal Oak that have elevators. Most don't. And there's no requirement to have those. But for mobility-challenged, for access, we would have those 14 units on the first floor.
But would visitors, visitors wouldn't be able, or visitors with mobility issues?
If someone was in a wheelchair, no. You're correct. Yes.
All right. And going back to the light study with all the zeros and point ones. The, I believe the max was 15, you're at 20. What would be the impact of going down to 15? Because it appears that right now, there wouldn't be any cast-off into the neighborhood.
It wouldn't change anything. And what it might do is add a pole here or there. But no matter what, what we have to adhere to is that there's no foot candles around the perimeter. So it'd be the same design intent. It just might be slightly reconfigured.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chisholm.
So the attainable units that you have reserved, are they going to be particular units that you identify? And if so, what floors will they be on?
I don't think, no, they won't be particular units. They'll just be as available. It's very hard to restrict units to particular users or uses. And so it'll just be in general, whichever, whoever qualifies under that protocol, that would be the unit that we'd use.
And then the mobility challenge, I forget the term they use, mobility restricted users. So the apartments on the first floor, you're saying are appropriate for people with mobility challenges?
Yes.
Is that only in that it's zero entry to the doorway? Or are there other features within the apartment that have been considered for that, such as the bathroom size, things like that?
Yeah, that's correct. There are other features. Bathrooms might be slightly larger, things of that nature. So there's type A and type B units, and I can't remember the percentages, but this will comply with the law. And I think it's 10 or 20% have to be of a type B unit, which means it has mobility access.
So, yeah, can you just give me a little? I'd like a little bit more detail. And I just want to like, would these apartments be appropriate for somebody who's in a wheelchair? So would cabinets be reachable for them? Would there be things like that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yep. But, sorry, long story short, yes.
For not all the?
Not all of them. There's a certain percentage that's required.
And what's the percentage that's required?
I think it's 10%. Honestly, I don't remember.
So 10% of the total units?
Yeah, total. That's right.
So about four apartments would be?
Yeah, that's correct. Yep. But that's for the, that's for the full ADA. Everything down there will be, you can roll right up to it.
Zero entry.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one question about the construction process itself. As this gets going, what impact the construction process might have on the neighborhood and what sort of protections we might be able to set up? Like, you know, I'm looking at the sidewalk and making sure it's passable, especially on Rochester Road. No matter, you know, Mr. Randazzo, no matter what property, whatever gets built here, that's a major passageway. And you can't have someone crossing the street to try to use the sidewalk over there, even though the south part of Rochester Road is beautiful and easily passable now, thanks to our city engineer. The north part still remains a little tricky to pass with four lanes.
Right. Well, in terms of the overall construction, you know, we'll definitely have the safety fencing and the features that the city requires for a construction project of this significance. And observe the hours of construction, which are listed in the ordinance. With respect to the Rochester roadside, there's no intention to close off the sidewalk during most of the construction. However, I think during the time the wall goes up on the Rochester roadside and the roof is installed, we may have to have a temporary closure for safety reasons at the sidewalk. And Jason?
I'll just add into that, too. The other thing is, because of a project like this, let's say that it happens, the sidewalks surrounding this building will all be redone because of the construction. It happens downtown, happens anywhere. So it's, at some point, you have to phase it where you may have to shut it down. The engineering department's going to say, because you're going to be tapping utilities and that, things are going to get beat up. And they're going to say, we want it to look like brand-new when you're done. And so they will all look brand-new and be redone. So it's something that has to be phased and dealt with, and make sure that there's safety precautions in place.
Would be reasonable to add, if you guys would be amenable, maybe to add into a potential development agreement that we would keep the sidewalks open, only shut it down on a temporary basis.
Yeah. That's right. Yes, yeah. He would know more about the construction than we would. But either way, it's, and you want, you, the city wants, I want, you want them to say, yep, it's going to be brand-new, look really good, ADA compliant, the whole nine. Because you're going to be driving, you know, trucks over and stuff like that, you know, working on it.
Mr. Hunt.
Sorry, I have one more question. Will there be some sort of stormwater management system or way of managing system?
Yes. Today, no stormwater management detention system is on the property, because it's an older property. We will have a compliant stormwater detention system at the property. So that will help with any flooding-type issues that may be in the area right now. It'll help, it'll help the issue.
Yeah, I was just going to add, so per law, we're not allowed, you're not allowed to drain onto any neighbor's sites. So this needs to corral any water that touches it, detain it before releases it into the system.
So that'll be, that'll be a definite upgrade for the property.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes, tell us, we heard in our Planning Commission chair pointed out or summarized at the meeting where this was considered, that one of the major issues that homeowners are addressing or concerned about is traffic on Genesee. And Mr. Cowan, you know, summarize your analysis of how traffic might flow onto and out of the site, or what percentages of it would wind up on Genesee versus Rochester or headed west.
Well, in talking to my good friend, Jacob, over here, who knows traffic better than I do, when you look at a site, unless it's got some peculiar situation, you always have 25% going in each of the four directions. So for, and then for those maybe going east, they wouldn't want to go down Genesee, they want to go, they want to go down 14 Mile. They're trying to get somewhere if they go east. We think opening up that, the alleyway for ingress and egress, by the way, for both properties, both the commercial property and the multifamily, that that will create an almost absolute opportunity for people to go that way from the apartment building over onto 14 Mile. So we just don't see from the apartment building, people wanting to go down Genesee when there's such an easy access rate to 14 Mile, if they want to go eastbound. To get to the other, either northwest or south, that's easy. That's right out, out Genesee, or right out the public alleyway onto Rochester Road. And really, that's the gist of the parking situation that we believe is going to occur. Like I said, too, it also creates the opportunity for people who use the commercial property no longer have to use the, that just the public alleyway to go south on Rochester Road, which as you know, is very close to 14 Mile. This way, they have the option of coming through the back of our development onto Genesee and then go out to Rochester Road, where it's a little bit more, you have a little bit more clarity when you're trying to make a left-hand turn and you're not as jammed up, and you don't have the right-hand, the left-hand turns coming off of 14 Mile onto Rochester Road that you have to navigate, and those types of things. So we think it's going to overall serve to reduce the congestion and the decision-making process in that area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you. We'll have a discussion on the side of the table, and we'll call you up if we have further questions. Commissioner Douglas, also a planning commissioner.
Yeah, I'll kick it off with kind of a broad overview, and I'm sure others will have more specific comments, but we sometimes hear people say, why did this, why is the city letting this happen? And the city doesn't initiate projects like this. Developers see an opportunity and come to us with a proposal, and we're obliged to consider their proposals. So both at the planning commission and at the city commission, they pay a fee to bring their development to us and have it considered for approval. We listen to, or rather respond to, market conditions. I mean, developers know what customers want to buy, or want to rent in this case, and I, as a capitalist, am inclined to give credence to the ideas that developers bring to us, because they're the ones who know the market, both in terms of the size of units that they may want to offer and the amenities. That is, you know, somebody wants a taller building with an elevator, but here, this is a shorter building, and their market opinion means that they don't feel that they need an elevator, and they take that risk in terms of maybe losing customers or tenants who want a building that is more accessible. But that's the market risk that they take. They're also replying to demand. So we see that our zoning ordinance, which is 25 years old, would allow 16 units on this property. And nobody these days is renting apartments of that size. The demand we see consistently across Royal, across southeast Michigan, is for smaller units, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and tenants accept that density and welcome it. They're not looking for big apartments. And as I say, our zoning ordinance, our master plan, is 25 years old. We're in the process of updating that. I will point out that multifamily is allowed in this zoning, it's just a question of whether a planned unit development allows that developer to have more density. But as we look forward to our new master plan, the early ideas that come out of that say that corridors are the place to put multifamily, and Rochester is an important corridor, which now has bus service going north and south. So that's another feature that is appealing especially to young voters. So I would expect that as we look forward to our new master plan, to our resulting zoning ordinance, we will see that the, what we recommend is for smaller units like this, because that is the, that's what the market is demanding. I said on the planning commission, I, you know, thoughtfully considered this proposal at that time. I like the changes they've made. They continue to listen to public opinion and anticipate the wishes of the city commission. And unless I find substantial objection to the, from my other commissioners, I do intend to support this project.
Commissioner Herzog.
Thank you. I also have some general comments. So I spent a lot of time in this area, especially on Tuesday nights, when I was campaigning. I was, was on that street and that neighborhood a lot, talking to residents about what their concerns were, and traffic was like one of the number one concerns. And it's a beautiful neighborhood with these really big backyards and lovely trees. And I think that everyone who lives in that neighborhood is there because of why I live in Royal Oak, and that is because this is a welcoming and inclusive city, that we have shared values set. We care about our family life and the quality of life here. And I think that multifamily, folks that live in multifamily developments also share those values, because they want to be here and in our community, and they invest in our community, and we should welcome them in our community. So this narrative that we have in my inbox, in my email, I feel about how these people are transient, and they will disrupt, and they won't care about family, and they'll disrupt our quality of life, I think is wrong. And, and, so I just want to make it very known that the commission believes that this is a welcoming and inclusive city, and we want to continue that.
Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And actually, piggyback on what Commissioner Herzog just said, I'll go a little further. Someone said that renters are prostitutes, murderers, and transient. 20,000, over 20,000 Royal Oakers are renters. That is a slap in the face to our residents who call Royal Oak home. And there was a business that flat out said, she doesn't want those people here. I don't want that business here. How dare, like, that is just beyond me. So I think that, taking that stance is just wrong for the people and residents of Royal Oak.
That's not fair.
Mr. Mayor? Please, the conversation stays over here, okay?
No, what's not fair is to call renters prostitutes and murderers.
That's not what it said.
It is exactly what it said.
We're not going to have it here, all right? We're not going to interrupt this meeting. It's not going to happen. I'll take control of it right away. We'll go back and break and come back out after midnight, if that's what we have to do. We have business to do. Nobody interrupted you, guys, when you're at public comment individually. I would expect the same courtesy for any commissioner up here that is speaking. Thank you.
So moving beyond that, I do have some questions for Mr. Murphy.
Sure.
Mr. Murphy, just a couple of things that are brought up. Getting back to the science of the zoning behind this, the first, there's about 40 feet of the first, the most southern part of the development, the L part that goes out, is at about 90 feet to the property line. And I think that that portion, correct me if I'm wrong, is that compliant with height standards?
It's 36 feet.
36?
You're referring, I'll hover over the area.
Yeah.
You're referring to the edge of the building, the building here, to the adjacent property line, is a little over 89 feet offset from that property line. And at that point, the building is 36 feet tall, which is compliant under the current zoning, what's allowed under the current zoning. Yes.
So that portion closest to the neighbors is within compliance with current zoning?
That entire leg.
The leg. And then how far is that next leg behind that?
The leg along Rochester Road, we measure the height to the, I'm going to zoom in. We measure the height of the building at the midpoint of the roof line of the dormers. And that height is 40.5 feet. The height, the height of the roof line, of the main roof line of the building, that midpoint is, is about 36 feet. It's just the dormers that add the additional height that go above and beyond what is currently allowable in that particular zoning district.
That goes about four feet above and beyond, and about 190 feet out, is that about right?
That seems about right.
Okay. Okay. And then what is it, so what, tell us what mixed-use two currently allows?
The mixed-use two zoning district allows for an enormous number of uses, from one family, two-family, to multifamily. It does allow for all the permitted uses in the neighborhood business zoning district, which subsequently, top-down structure allows for all the uses in the office service districts. So I'll point out just a few. A standard restaurant, a medical office, veterinary office, financial institutions, any, any large number of uses. It does, however, explicitly prohibit driveways, excuse me, drive-throughs. So for instance, the existing financial institution, vacant one, that had a drive-through facility, that element is not allowed in the mixed-use two zoning district, but the actual financial institution is.
Okay. And then if it's, if it is an office use, I know we've seen offices come before us in other mixed-use areas, what are the setbacks on those?
Well, the setbacks are advisable by the planning commission during the course of site plan review, so there is a tremendous amount of flexibility associated with setbacks.
Okay. So could they, if this was an office building, could it go closer to the lot lines?
Yes, in theory it could.
Okay.
And it could be of the same, the equal height.
Okay, so it could be closer, a different use could be closer to the lot line and the same height. That's interesting. And then, one more question here is, there was comments about the safety and et cetera. This has been reviewed by the fire marshal and public safety.
Of course. And the building inspection division of the community development department.
Okay, so this would not even make it to us if this were not deemed safe and accessible?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's my question now. Thank you.
Okay, I saw it. Commissioner Herzog, did you have?
Safety question.
Oh, perfect. Commissioner Cheesom.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess I also want to reiterate what my colleagues up here have said, in that, you know, renters are an important part of our community. I was a renter for 10 years in a different community before I realized the magic of Royal Oak, and I was engaged in the community and helped my neighbors and supported, supported the people around me. And I think that you, you know, if this is approved, you will find that your neighbors will be much like that as well. So I do want to also just offer words of, you know, how much we value all members of our community, including those who are renting. I also want to comment that there's also a national housing shortage, and a housing shortage here in our own community. I had an interaction with a close family friend whose college student son was looking for a one-bedroom apartment in Royal Oak. He looked to an apartment, I don't know what you say, a chain, like, you know, one of the owners that has lots of different apartment complexes in Royal Oak, and there was not a one-bedroom apartment available. That was just this week. So this is, there is a need for this in our community. And again, I think it was Commissioner Douglas mentioned, the transit, this line was just opened up, which will drop people off at Oakland University, for example. So I think it's a really great opportunity for residents. I like that the first floor does have, you know, ADA compliant apartments, and I think that, you know, as people age, they look to change their housing situation. They may not always want a house with snow shoveling and all of the, and yard work. And so there would also be the opportunity to, for folks in this area to continue to live among their neighbors and their community in a, in a setting like this. So for those reasons, I'm inclined to support this.
Mr. Hunt?
So this is a location that's been abandoned for about a decade. And now there's a proposal to have what appears to be a pretty decent project placed on it that will help to cure a housing crisis. And it's housing that is likely affordable, and that would work for younger people, teachers who may want to live in the community that they work in, restaurant workers who may want to live in the community that they work in. And it's, I like the fact that it's outside of downtown. We have so many things going, buildings going up in downtown, residential, multifamily housing going in downtown. And everybody wants to live in downtown in a nice new apartment. So I like the fact that this is more on the northern end, so that we're getting some, some action happening in my neck of the woods up there. So I like, Commissioner Cheesom, appreciate the fact that there is some accessible housing or units on the bottom floor. I would like to see maybe a few more units be more attainable housing, but I appreciate the fact that you've put that effort in as is, so my two cents.
All right. Oh, I'll just add a few comments here, and Commissioner Cheesom touched upon it, and I want to use that for sort of the base. In the U.S., clearly, we're about 7 million units short on housing right now. And we're seeing that impact, everybody that's looking to transition out of the house that they have today, or looking to move into their first place as a younger person, or, you know, get away from being a roommate and being somebody that can start their family in, you know, a new path. In Royal Oak, if you translate that, that's probably a couple thousand units, if not more, because we are a very desirable community. We're one of the safest communities in the country. We have 52 parks, we have nice neighborhoods, nice homes. We do things that people want to do and want to enjoy, and our community has become ever more popular. We're finding the fact that we used to be a transient community when I bought my house, a starter home community. People would move here and have their kids and move out to Rochester, Novi, South Lion. But the fact is, folks are staying here now. And 20 years later, those kids, my kids almost, want to live in the community that they grew up in. And it's hard for us, as elected officials here, to say, we have space for you. The fact is, is that we are struggling, due to our popularity, to find places that are available, as Commissioner Cheesom said, you know, you can't even find something that's available, let alone affordable. I think that is a crisis that we have some role to play in our four corners in our community to solve. I heard comments tonight, you know, listen to the residents, and absolutely, I have lots of notes here that talk about traffic concerns, that talk about some things that we can, we can get into. But remember, this is a town of 60,000 people as well. And the concerns about finding places for people to live are real among a lot of your neighbors, adjacent to your neighborhood, outside your neighborhood. We talked to lots of people, I go to neighborhood meetings all the time, and finding places for people to age in place, finding places for people where their kids can move back to Royal Oak is a big topic of conversation, a big concern for a vast majority of Royal The transient comment, I won't say anything more than what Commissioner Collo said, but last time I checked, going through my grandfather's stuff, he wasn't a prostitute, although he had another bank account we didn't know about, so I can't say that for sure. But he transitioned out of his house and moved into a brand-new apartment building with there 30 years till he died. And I'd like to say he was every member of the community, or every part of the community as anybody else, despite the fact that he wrote a rent check versus a mortgage check. So I think those concerns are, you know, I have a very challenging time based in the reality of being up here 12 years, seeing projects like this throughout the city in my own neighborhood, and not enduring any of those issues related to the fact that some people believe that if you rent your home, you're not part of the neighborhood or part of the community, or that you bring crime, or all of these things. I reject those on the surface, and that's what I'll have to say about that. Now, the traffic concern, I believe there's a, there's a concern, my brother lives in Clausen, just right off Genesee, believe it or not. And Genesee, there are, there are some traffic concerns right now. And I think there's a number of things that we can look at as partners in the community to reduce the traffic. But the reality is, is if you have 65 spots here, you assume they're all full, which I'm having a hard time believing they'll all be full, but let's say that they are. You divide that by four, northeast, southwest, that's 16 cars, 16 potential cars that could go east at any given time. And I think the design of this has accommodated the fact that there's a right turn only on Genesee, you can use the alley to get out to 14. And, you know, so I think those, those traffic concerns are, or parking in the neighborhood are, are not going to be, come to fruition as, as many would think. And we know this because we can point to developments of similar nature in other parts of the city where we have not endured those issues. So the concern is heard, but we also have a responsibility to govern, you know, with reality and experience of what we've seen. with reality and experience of what we've seen, um, and if traffic is a big concern, I just, I can't use that as a, as a crutch to say no to this project, because I don't believe traffic is going to be an issue based on the math, based on the data, based on projects that we've seen. So, um, I understand there's a lot of folks that don't like it, I know that we can disagree on certain things, and, um, and, you know, um, but what we base our disagreements on have to be rooted, in fact, and the two things that I heard come up most consistently were traffic and the nature of transient people, and as a matter of fact, I have to reject those. What, pardon me, pardon me, guys, come on, remember, this is a courtroom, you got to think of it like a courtroom, okay? You can't interrupt. It's not, nope, I'm sorry, you're not above everybody else here, you don't control the meeting, this is the public's meeting, and the public has its rules, okay? We're just not going to do that. So, we also have a responsibility to the community at large, 60,000 people here that, you know, are looking to find options for loved ones, for themselves, to call Royal Oak home. So, we have to balance that, we have to look at the trade-offs, we have to manage that to some extent, and, um, there are certainly a lot of attributes that are beneficial to the city at large, um, and we have to weigh that against the perceived or real impacts to the adjoining neighborhood, and that is where our calculus lies. So, that brings us to a point where, if there's any questions, any discussion, or does anyone wish to make a motion? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'm going to, uh, I have a question for our city attorney. Mr. Grochowski, let's talk about petitions.
Yes, and I had a chance, uh, to re-review the ordinance in detail. It's my understanding protest petition was filed, assuming that protest petition meets the requirements of the section pertaining to protest petitions under the zoning ordinance 770-132, um, would require two-thirds vote of the city commission. Further reading, uh, that protest, the ordinance provides that the protest petition shall be presented to the commission prior to the final action on the amendment. So that tells me in reading and interpreting that particular section that that require, would require a two-thirds vote of this commission at the second reading, but not necessarily at the first reading. So, reading it as a whole with that second sentence, it makes clear to me that as long as that petition does meet the requirements of the section being 20%, apparently, it appears that it probably meets the requirements of that section, uh, but that the two-thirds vote of the entire commission, not the commission present, would be required to pass it upon second reading. So it'd be my opinion, based on the language of this ordinance, that, uh, a majority vote, uh, could pass on first reading tonight, but again, so, any second reading would require two-thirds vote.
Uh, that's very good. So I am going to move approval of the planned unit development as proposed upon first reading, um, with the intention to bring back a second reading that we expect will require a two-thirds vote of the full commission.
A motion by Commissioner Douglas, or a second?
Has a question, Commissioner Douglas, does that include the sidewalk protection the petition has agreed to?
Um...
The petition has agreed to already?
Yeah. So that, uh, they, this is just the comment today, it's not in there?
That they would add to the development between first reading and second reading?
Uh, yes, that's, uh, that, that's what it includes.
Yeah.
Yep, we have a second discussion. Yes, Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Commissioner. So years ago, there was a development in my, literally in my backyard, uh, it was the Harrison Two project, um, and this development's actually, uh, they only had a 20-foot deviation from the lot lines, whereas this one has a 90 feet, and that one was a little bit taller. And at the time, um, my neighbors and I got together, and we actually were able to work with, uh, the former commissioner, you know, the mayor and, um, a previous commission, there were some changes that were made, um, and, uh, much like you all had an opportunity to meet with the developers, and some changes were made, looks like it was brought down a little, it was taken back a little. Um, and, you know, my neighbor still, you know, some of my neighbors still thought it would be the end of our neighborhood, we thought we had destroyed the character of the neighborhood, that we have, we made arguments about cars speeding through the neighborhood, about people, I, you know, I made a comment about transient people too, I, you know, I was less in line at the time. Um, and as it turns out, we could fast forward to, you know, almost 10 years later, the neighborhood's just fine, you know, we have new neighbors in the back of us. I know this because I see them walking their dogs by my house every day, I know this because they play at the park, with my kids playing with their kids, and we're all rural Oakers at the end of the day. Um, and in fact, property values have only gone up because they took dilapidated buildings, knocked them down, and built these lovely buildings that have a price tag that I couldn't afford right now, but people do and enjoy it, and it has brought up the rest of our neighborhood values. So, it, it adds to the character of the neighborhood. So I could tell you that as someone who's been through this, I've seen it, I've lived it, it's okay. So, I'm voting yes tonight.
Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna call for the vote, all's in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion passes. All right.
Thank you very much.
All right. That will bring us to item 11, which is a resolution to amend composting ordinance section 633-13 of the Code of Ordinances, first reading. Ms. Fox?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, I have for you a resolution to revise composting ordinance 633-13 from 2004, and approve a composting guide to help educate residents on the proper ways to compost. The state of Michigan aims to reduce landfill, landfill food waste by 50% before 2030. One of the most sustainable ways to achieve this goal is to encourage backyard composting. Last week was International Composting Awareness Week, which caught the attention of Mayor or Governor Gretchen Whitmer, who proclaimed the Awareness Week for the first time in Michigan history. For the sake of time, the resolution of this ordinance, along with the Comprehensive Composting Guide, aids several SCAP actions related to waste, there's actually one, two, three, four, five, I won't read them all, but I certainly can if you'd like for me to. The new draft of the composting ordinance may appear to be a major revision, but we are only making a few small adjustments that will make it easier for residents to participate. They include, including wood-style bins as a material option, including food waste as an accepted material and not a gray, not listed item, removing the size restrictions as they were too small before for many residents, providing an instructional composting guide, adding a restriction for commercial composting facilities in residential backyards, and adjusting language to be more supportive of composting. I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Questions? No questions?
Maybe three hours ago.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Is the commission breaking down? All right, thank you, that was a stretch.
Was that a cat joke? I missed it.
Yeah, it was. Oh, look at that, how to lasagna layer. Um, okay. Um, yeah, I would, I will just say, in general, I mean, my comments, we talked a little bit about this, um, last week, Ms. Fox, I think, I tried a false start in my house with composting. It was really hard to teach my family, plus my container was really small, and I put it under the sink, and it was a little bit of a challenge, and so, um, I think having some communal support here, uh, and, and listening to Chef John's story over at Alchemy as well, about, I mean, the sheer amount of food waste, and it's not just the waste that's filling up our landfills, it's the overgrowth of food that causes higher prices for food, that causes land to be used that shouldn't be used for growing food, to grow for food, and all the fertilizers and chemicals and everything that have to grow stuff that, you know, we honestly just throw away in a lot of cases. And frankly, at my house, because of my, uh, small little compost bin that would fill up, um, I became the de facto compost bin, so eating everything at the end of dinner, as opposed to throwing it away, because that, my grandfather taught me that is a mortal sin. But he did grow up in the Depression and spent many years in Greenland, um, with, with few rations, so, um, okay, um, no questions? So, what are you looking for out of the city commission tonight?
Uh, well, the approval of the revisions, as well as the approval of the composting guide.
Okay, so both the guide and the ordinance revisions?
Yeah, they go hand in hand.
Okay. All right. Shoot, sorry, I just messed up my new escribe system.
Gent four, Ms. Fox?
Thank you for putting together the ordinance and the, I'm sure with the assistance of, um, our, um, our attorney, but also the guide. Um, and I understand that, you know, you've had, um, for lack of a better word, workshops or, uh, community forums, um, in the past with regards to environmental sustainability and all, can we expect any in the future as it relates to how to properly compost?
Yeah, I actually held two last month, and so, no, that's okay. Um, the idea is that we'll host at least one month dedicated to composting, probably like early spring, March, April-ish, but, um, but absolutely, that's a part of this as well.
Thank you. Um, I know myself and many of my neighbors utilize a, um, a composting company, um, outside of Royal Oak, and pay for that on a monthly basis, so it's nice to have a how-to of how to do it ourselves and, you know, keep those dollars in Royal Oak, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, I use Midtown as well, I love them. The idea behind this is that, that is a truck on the road, which uses diesel or gasoline, and, and so certainly, even though we want to think of more comprehensive items or options for residents, um, doing it in your backyard is probably the most sustainable option.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we have a motion.
Do we?
Do we? No, we don't? She said she needed us to approve the ordinance, I couldn't find it in there, in the guide. So you just want feedback tonight?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, you said there's no motion? I'm like, what are you? Oh, there's no motion on the table, you guys are confusing me.
You guys are making it really easy for me, get you when you're tired, I like it.
I think I know what I'm doing, but when I'm tired, you question me and I self-doubt everything.
I'm gonna go last ever, so...
Um, okay, there's a motion in front of us, but there's no motion on the table. Commissioner Colo?
Hi, I'd like to move the proposed resolutions.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Colo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cheesem. All right, discussion. Commissioner Herzog?
Um, I want to also ground us in the importance of this ordinance and, uh, the composting work that, um, Ms. Fox has done. Um, in, I haven't been on the commission this long, but in July of 2020, the city commission approved the climate emergency resolution and directed the development of the greenhouse gas, uh, emissions inventory. And then in January of 2021, the city commission set the goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 40% by 2030 and achieve net zero by 2050. And this is from the 2018 baseline, which is important, because you can't determine where you're going if you don't know where you are, and these goals align with the county and the state, and that's why they were made. And so then, in May of 2022, the city commission approved the Royal Oak Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, um, and this serves as the roadmap of strategies to achieve carbon emission goals and operate the city in a more sustainable way. Um, the 2018 Royal Oak Community Wide Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory indicated that landfilling of solid waste was 1.8% and waste collection and transport was 0.3%. So in total, 2.1% of our total, of our community greenhouse gas emissions are attributed to managing our waste. And so in order for us to reach our goals, we have to rethink our product consumption and the management of our waste, and so I'm in support of this as a next step in that direction.
Wonderful. No other comments? All right, I'll call for the vote, all's in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Fox. Um, Ms. Donna Hugh is back, which means we're talking about a hearing of necessity in standard resolutions three and four, special assessment paving of East Parent Avenue.
Yes, uh, this evening is a public hearing of necessity for a parent from Longfellow to the dead end. The street, uh, borders the north side of Lawson Park, and the two properties that are within the assessment district are both in favor of the paving project. The city owns the park property that's along the southern frontage of the road there, and so will be responsible for 100% of the cost of that frontage. The city clerk sent notice to the property owners and also published this in the paper for the public hearing this evening. I did want to note that this project is proposing a 21-foot wide road instead of our normal 27-foot wide road in order to save several mature trees. Uh, this will require that we eliminate parking from one side of the street if this project does move forward, um, and so the traffic committee will be looking at that issue somewhat separately later this month, and we'll bring that back to you in June, uh, for a final decision on that. After closing the public hearing this evening, I have two resolutions for your consideration if you want to continue moving forward. The first is standard resolution three, which declares this as a necessity, and the second is standard resolution four, which sets the date for the public hearing of assessment to be on June 10th.
Questions from Ms. Donna Hugh? Are we scheduling the hearing, or do we have to have the hearing tonight?
There is a hearing this evening.
Yeah, so that conflicts with my notes on public comment. Okay, hopefully nobody's here that left that wanted to speak on this. So, um, with no questions, I'll open up the public hearing, same rules apply, anyone here to speak on this topic? None, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the side of the table. All right, so now, there's a couple resolutions in front of us about necessity and... If I knew how to make the cricket sound, I would do it, but I do not. Commissioner Colo?
I move standard resolution three.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Colo to move standard resolution three, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas, discussion. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote, all's in favor?
Do we need a roll call, roll down us?
Um, we'll start with the motion maker, Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Herzog?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheesem?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Commissioner Colo?
Move standard resolution four.
Uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Colo for standard resolution four, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt? Missed me on my head swing. All right.
We're getting ready for the budget meeting.
Discussion? Okay, uh, roll call on this one too? Or are we good just with unanimous?
You can.
Okay, or not, I assume it's unanimous, but I don't, good with a voice vote. Okay, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. So that brings us to the license agreement for sidewalk benches, 823 South Main Street.
Yes, uh, we have a business owner at 823 South Main who is requesting a license agreement to place two benches in the public right-of-way of South Main Street, one on each side of their doorway. Uh, the business is Piranha Juices, which is located just south of Lincoln on the east side of Main Street, so that's just outside of the central business district. Piranha Juices leases the spaces, leases the space from South Main Lofts LLC, and both parties are listed on the drafted license agreement. My understanding is that the business wants a place for their customers to sit outdoors, and has been very patient, and is here tonight if you have any further questions for him. Um, as a staff, we do have concerns that approving this license agreement for benches would set a precedent for an approval of this type of installation at other properties throughout the downtown, potentially leading to a somewhat non-uniform-looking corridor if we have different-looking benches all over the place. Um, there's also a concern that passersby could potentially relocate the benches, you know, turn them to block the sidewalk, they could potentially walk away with them, um, just knowing how people can be in the late evening hours. Uh, there does not appear to be a demonstrated need, whether this is a, a desire of the business for this encroachment, and so staff is not recommending approval of the license agreement.
Commissioner Colo?
Just a question. Um, if the benches are put out there, are people able to pass, like, a wheelchair, or is there accessibility?
Yes, it does not block anything, it's kind of tucked away right into the building. So as long as they stay where they're supposed to be, they wouldn't be blocking anybody.
And is it possible to have them, uh, I don't know, bolted down or like, secured down in some way?
Um, that might be a good question for the business owner of the, what they had submitted to us, it looks like they were wooden benches, so I don't think they're designed to be bolted down, but that's not to say they couldn't be in some way. some way.
Commissioner Collo.
So I guess, would your recommendation potentially change if they were bolted down? Would that kind of change the idea there?
I'm a little bit more worried about setting the precedent of benches here, and does everybody get to put something outside of their business than? We have a pretty uniform policy of having sidewalk cafes in the central business district with very specific rules, and it's, sometimes you open that can of worms, if you let one person do it, how do you tell the next that they can't? So that's my biggest concern with this one.
Unlike the other parts of downtown Royal Oak, there really isn't, I'm looking here, and I don't know if anything's changed since the last Google map, but there's not any city-built benches in the area. So whereas if you're in Starbucks and you're waiting for your order, you can go and sit on a city bench or on the little flower bed, and as I did with my dog, whom my wife used her gift card to buy at Starbucks the other day. But down here, there's really the absence of that. We also have wider sidewalks, and I see we have some sandwich boards up according to Google Maps as well. So I think, while I appreciate that, there are also, what's different down here, too, is the absence of any public sitting space, which is a little bit of a challenge. And it does matter, because people do, you know, like, we get bagels, usually we go everywhere with the dog, and until they start letting, you know, those people against those dogs, those specists, until they can go into those food and beverage places, you know, typically I wait outside, or if people are waiting for an order, it's nice to go outside. So having a place to sit, I think, matters. Probably something we need to look at as the south and north parts of town grow, not tonight, not this year, but as, as we look at it. But in the meantime, if there's a need where you have a food sur, I don't know, I don't know that, maybe people wait on a bench outside H&R Block waiting for their tax return, but maybe not. It seems like, yes, there is that risk always, but I think that if you have an establishment that can, can prove cause, saying, hey, I'm, I'm here for the community, I'm serving juices, I'm serving food, I need a little place for people to sit, because there isn't any public sitting there while their orders being made, I think you can make a few one-offs if it's absolutely critical to the business. Commissioner Cheesem?
I had a similar thought about that, because I also looked to see where nearby benches might be, public benches, and I think, you know, thinking again about a walkable city, you know, an inclusive city, I think it is important to have spaces for people to sit. You know, I also think that there's like a, you know, supermarket down that, that way. However, this isn't a public bench, so this would really be a bench for their customers only, so, you know, I think, I do wonder if this is something for the city to look at as far as installing public benches, you know, in that area, that could be used for, for everybody, yeah. But I think that is an important concern.
And if you had a bench, you'd figure most people that would use it would be from, because if you're going to the barcode to workout, it's like, what are you doing sitting down? Get in here. Press an iron, do some jumping jacks. So there's a request, there's a recommendation, again, in engineering, you know, analysis, which is the job of the engineer, but there's other factors we have to consider, which is in front of us, so.
I just have a question about the licensing agreement. Do we, would get them again, or does it expire? Or just, like, let's say that we approve this tonight, or whatever, but then the city does this whole plan, benches in the south end, and decides like, that's, maybe doesn't fit with the plan anymore, is that?
We have the right to terminate without cause. We're the government, we can do what we want.
90 days notice.
90 days notice.
90 days.
That's one thing Mr. Grachowski and others have been better about. It was a big sticking point when I first got elected, like, how do we, with the cell phone towers, why do we have these contracts that we can never get out of? It should always, we should always have the best terms to get out of them, because things change, to your point. Commissioner Collo.
I guess I'd be interested to see with my fellow commissioner, say, I know the, it sounds like the owner spoke with public comment, he mentioned he'd be willing to put benches that could be bolted into the sidewalk, and I think that'd be...
Hardly secured, physically secured, so they can't be...
Yeah, relocated. Maybe people left to yield and really had a good night. So I, you know, I'd be in favor of this if we include securing the benches.
Do you want to make a motion to them?
That's my motion.
Okay. Mr. Grachowski, is that something possible to include in the contract?
Your Honor, I was just reviewing the proposed license agreement, and maybe the engineer can better answer it, but I did have a hand in drafting this. Like, our license agreements for sidewalk cafes and what we require restoration, like, if they have to drill a hole in our sidewalk, I would assume that's in there, but I can't find it at the moment, so I would want to make sure that that's part of that. So if this agreement somehow, or those benches were removed, those, those holes would need to be repaired per engineering standards, so.
But as part of the motion, that's something, if it's not in there, you could ensure that it is.
Absolutely. If you can include that as part of the motion, that's in the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Collo, zero second. Second by Commissioner Herzog. Discussion?
It is in there.
Yes, Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, I'm willing to give this a try. If it gets out of hand, if all of the kids want one all of a sudden, and we are faced with a whole raft of applications for these, we may have to step back and reconsider, but let's, let's give it a try.
Yeah, I agree, I think we should take some action and not sit on it, you know? We could bench it for another time, but, you know, I feel like this is something that, you know, is worth a shot, especially in that part of town.
I'm just happy there's a sidewalk there to put it on.
That is true. All right, I'll call for a vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. So before we end tonight, I'm gonna ask Ms. Davids to come up here. I have a bone to pick with her, and I need her to be held accountable and come up here. Ms. Davids, can you open up this next impromptu topic?
Sure, sure. I know it's an early eight, but we would be remiss if we didn't mention that last week was Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, which was May 5th through May 11th, which recognizes the professional links clerks provide between residents and local government. Municipal clerks have a very tough job. They have to be ever mindful of neutrality and impartiality. Why am I gonna cry? And render equal services to all. In Royal Oak, we are so appreciative of having City Clerk Melanie Hallis and her dedicated staff. And we simply cannot let this week pass without recognizing that we have one of Michigan's best clerks. Well, I embarrassed myself, so you don't have to. And we have a small gift for you. And you don't have to say, and you don't have to say anything, Melanie. I feel like I double-crossed you, but we did it at the end of the meeting when you're just amongst friends.
And while the world is celebrating International Municipal Clerk Week, every day in Royal Oak, we have municipal clerk strong. And I can't take credit for, I'm, I'm the deliverer, so it took a lot of better, more people to... So, except that's the one contract where she can't terminate for convenience, so I think you still have another 18 years of indentured servitude to the city of Royal Oak, I think, Melanie Hallis. Yeah, oh, man. Just add a couple zeros to that, all right? She won't, no. Now, really, and I know your workload has been significantly higher over the years, the patience that you show to people with the new voting laws, answering their questions, but also dealing with shenanigans and things like that at the polls, it is not an easy job, but it's the most important job in the city, is ensuring that the very basic tenet of democracy is upheld in the best possible way. And for those that you, that don't know, Ms. Hallis, Clerk Hallis, is the benchmark in the county. People come to her for advice and input on how to do things. She finds issues, she has solutions, she really does an exceptional job, and whenever we have a situation here in Royal Oak, she's very patient. She's like, okay, I understand the question, but let me walk you through how we might do it. And she's very, very helpful, and if you've been blessed to be able to interact with her, consider yourself very fortunate. So thank you so much, Ms. Hallis, for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Oh, and there's one other more impromptu thing as well tonight. Ted Fenton has been with the city. I'm just kidding. Todd Fenton has been with the city for over 10 years. He started off here as Economic Development Manager, made his way up the ranks, became deputy city manager.
It's actually 10 years now that it's midnight.
10 years to the day.
Yeah.
And to celebrate a decade, and to celebrate Todd's career, and definitely, you've stepped up to do the role of interim city manager. We've always had a really good working relationship, and I think all the other commissioners feel the same way. You've helped shape this community in a way that other communities are completely jealous. When it comes to economic development, I keep asking Todd for newspaper quotes, like, what number are we at now? Is it 500 million, 700 million, 800 million of new development in the city of Royal Oak, meeting the needs of Royal Oakers? He's like, yeah, probably north of that. And so, just give me a number, or I'm not gonna be lying, all right? And, and it's just, it takes a lot of effort to figure out how to get things done, get them done right, get them done with our value system, and get them done in a way that Royal Oakers love. And so he stepped up to the plate to be our interim city manager. When the former manager left, he's dealt with a lot of issues that have been outstanding and jumped into the role and has been juggling that ball, and you know, when you're capable and you're smart, and you have an extensive network, and the work product of your results are very public, it, you know, you know, there's gonna be opportunities in the private sector. And just know, over your time here, we're grateful for your work, Todd. We know this is your last meeting, and that a little bit of you is gonna stay with all of us here, and a little bit of us may stay with you
Oh, no.
...in your next office, Fenton Avenue.
Thank you.
And this is yours to keep.
Thank you, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
And...
Motion to adjourn?
You want a motion? You don't want to give a big speech?
No, I do not.
All right. Commissioner Collo, this is for you, we appreciate your work.
This is work about why you got base, Mo.
All right, well, no, sincerely, a job well done, thank you for everything. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I made all the rest of them, so...
Commissioner Collo moves to adjourn, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. All right, any lengthy discussion on this topic?
Oh, let me just say that, oh, nevermind.
All right, no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Adjourned.